Our Board Reorganizational Meeting to Order. Kathy, our first item of business is roll call. Please let the record show that all Board members are in attendance. Our first business item is to receive the recent election results. The recommended action is that the Board accept and order filed certification of the clerk of Greene County of the results of the school election held on Tuesday, April 6, 2021. Somebody would be willing to make that motion?
No.
Okay, Sharita, is there a second?
Okay.
Jerry? Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to do a roll call verbal vote. Jerry?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Denise?
Aye.
Sharita?
Aye.
Charles?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Our next agenda item is our recognition of our outgoing Board members. And this is going to take a little while. Yes, this is going to take a little while. Steven is queuing up our PowerPoint slide there. And we're going to take just a moment, Jill, Jerry, and Bruce, to spend a little bit of time to honor you all tonight individually and then receiving some remarks from those of us who are here. And then if you would like to make any closing remarks, I'll queue you at that time. Steven, we're going to start with Jill Patterson. Jill, advance the slide, please. Jill has served on our Board since 2015. And there's some beautiful pictures of Jill there and all of her work. She served as Board President during the year of 2018 and SPS Vice President in 2016 and 2017. Jill, I have a quote from Tim Rosenberg, who you've served with. And he shares this. "I am grateful that my Board service coincided with Jill's. Our Board benefited not just from her professional experience, but also from her decisiveness and kindness." All the other Board members that you have served with are here tonight to share their remarks. I will start, and then I'll see who else would like to chime in. It is, I know you're getting your tissue.
I want everyone to see that I'm smiling.
Yes, I know, I know, I know.
I'm good.
I don't, I don't have any tissues, so you may have to.
She only gave me one, so please don't overdo.
That's okay, that's okay. It has been an honor serving with you for the past five years. Even though I didn't know you prior to my Board service, I was aware of you and your fierce advocacy for children and justice in our community that has been demonstrated for many, many years in our community. And now I can say that I've seen that firsthand, that you really do believe in every child, like you really do believe that. And you help students see their worth and their value despite their challenges, and you have been a faithful advocate for our children. Your role as a legal expert, an SPS parent, and just being an honest, caring human with no personal agenda has given our Board a unique perspective and really helped make all of us stronger. I've always enjoyed your giddy excitement for graduation activities. You love passing out diplomas at JQH. You also love standing with our launch students in the hallway of craft with their parents when they graduate in the hallways here. And what that tells me is it doesn't matter the ceremony, because you genuinely realize the work that we do as a Board, and you cheer on each student through that finish/starting line. I'll miss the little things about you, like making sure that the parents get good pictures of their kids when they're saying the pledge or receiving awards. That's been your role for five years, so somebody's going to have to step up and do that, for sure. And I've watched you in both public and private conversations cheer on our teachers, our staff, our parents, and our children. And you have served well, Jill. Thank you.
You, my friend.
Anybody else wants to share some remarks towards our colleague Jill?
Well, Jill and I didn't know each other, but we ran with each other. I don't want to even say against each other, but we ran with each other. And I had to know her that way, and I know she cares about students. And to me, that was all I really cared about. All the rest of it was fluff or whatever it was. She cared about students. So to serve on the Board with people who truly care about students is all I wanted to do. And all the other things will work out. They'll all work out if people will just focus on that, and she focuses on that. During the time we ran with Francine and were able to be elected at that point in time, and her goals haven't changed. So to me, to be that kind of a person and show up at the Board meetings for six years, you can be a different kind of person than runs, and she's not. She is, she is who she is.
Thank you, Bruce.
What they said. I will miss many things about Jill. She is first and foremost a decent woman. And she has been principled in every decision she made, from, I'm sure, deciding to run for the Board, the way she campaigned, to the way she conducted herself in every conversation. And she has that rare capacity to be both humble and humbling, which for some of us, that's a very good thing, being humbled occasionally. She is a fierce advocate, but a fair woman. She's smart, she's caring, and she has made us better on every level, both as people, but certainly as a Board. Not just as Board members, but as a Board. She gets what Boards are supposed to do. And particularly, as this meeting is likely to be one of our longer ones, I will miss very much your steady encouragement for us to pick up the pace. We will miss you.
That's right, that's right. Jerry?
I didn't know Jill before either. But she's been, I'm not going to disagree with anything that's been said so far, but have been a rock in my mind for this Board. And one of the things that I like best, or I respect her is, a lot of this deals with facts, figures, mind stuff, but a lot of it has to do with heart. And she has the heart. And that's for kids, for the process, for us. She probably, you made this more like a family than it's ever been before, whether it's bringing this together, talking about it, however it feels like. I was going to say that later, too, but I'm going to get that up and say it now, because I think you have been instrumental in making this feel like welcome family, we're part of it, whether it's me or anybody else to do that. But you've been a rock, and so I just have the utmost respect. I'm missing you every couple of weeks. Thank you for what you do in jail.
I'll go next. I only had the opportunity to serve with you, Jill, for a very short amount of time. However, I, and we had a not-traditional year in 2020 with my Board service, but I did get to serve with you at graduation. And yes, you are very enthusiastic at graduation. And one of the things that I take away, that I learned from you, is how much you celebrate our students, from the youngest to the oldest. You really cheer on our students and give them your attention and your time in ways that demonstrate your care and concern for them, and I value that, and I learned that from you. Thank you.
Brittany?
My turn. So everything everyone else said, I'm like Charles, what everyone else said. And I look back on the six years you've been on our Board, the amazing accomplishments that our Board, our district has made in that six years, and you have been a supporter in every effort. And the word that Charles used, I would use as a fierce advocate for public education for our students. And you were a fierce advocate for kids way before you came to the school district and your Board before. And you brought that with you to our School Board. And I agree with Jerry, you brought us lots of laughs, but lots of very good for each of us to reflect on decisions we were making. You brought your legal knowledge with you, which was extremely valuable. And your friendship, and we're going to miss that, I'm going to miss that, but we are going to continue with our friendship. And that's about all I can say with that. Give me a little more, Jerry, so a little bit of that. You know how I feel.
Jill, the floor is yours.
Oh, my turn. Well, I didn't prepare anything. I wasn't sure this was going to be like my funeral.
There's a lot of laughs.
So what I want to say is that I have served on a lot of different Boards in this community. And that's a good thing, because I do think that we need that kind of preparation. This is a different level of Board, both in terms of the time commitment, in terms of the kinds of decisions, the speed at which this gentleman to my right took me some getting used to, to move at the speed he moves at to get things done. But we got there, and I appreciate you using the word "family." I do feel like one of the most important features of this Board has been how well we get along with one another, how much respect we have for one another, and how we realize it's not any one of our agendas. It's about what's best for these kids, about our teachers, about our community. I appreciate that everybody noticed, which I love graduation. But I want to say why. That is a really tender moment to share with an individual, and I've enjoyed it. I don't know how we got to today, but I always said that six years felt like a good enough amount of time for this service. But the other thing, in addition to how much I have respected and appreciated those of you on the Board with me, Carolyn, John, and their team, Steven, and Bruce, and there's just, they're everywhere. There's Lynn. Told her I wasn't going to cry. From South Jersey, I cry. I am very proud of serving alongside this administration and so grateful to get to watch them work so up close, because they are phenomenal. So thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Jill. Thank you. We'll move on to Jerry. We're going in tenured order, so Bruce, you're last. You are the winner tonight. Jerry. Jerry has served on our Board since 1994, served as Board President 2009, 2010, 2017, VP in '08, oh, I'm sorry, '07 and '08. He served as MSBA, which is Missouri State, Missouri State. Everything's MSU around here. Missouri School Board Association President in 2012 and 2013, and was awarded the MSBA Paul Morris Community Service Award, which is a big deal, in 2016. I have a couple quotes from previous Board members that have served with Jerry across his 15 years, 15 years of service. Jean Twitty shares, "I always knew when a decision was being made by either Jerry or Bruce, it was always with the students' best interest in mind first and foremost." Chris Callen shares, quote, "Jerry, your positivity and never wavering commitment to the students of Springfield, as well as throughout the state, was inspiring. Your strong voice and hard work for public education helped to shape public policy and blocked relentless attempts to implement destructive and ideological-driven laws. Your influence will be evident for many years to come. Well done, my friend." I'll transition to some remarks from your current Board. You and I have worked together in this community long before our Board service, both around the conversations of education, business, and community, professional development. And one thing I've always found in you is that you are a loyal, contributing colleague that deeply cares about our community, and that's been well-established for many, many years. When I think about your Board service specifically, I think of you championing early childhood education and parents as teachers, always, never giving up on those programs. And look where we're at today, Jerry. I think of your strong support of partnerships and programs between our public schools and our local business sector, because you know that the success of both of those are contingent upon that relationship. Your engagement with MSBA and your passion for legislative advocacy to fight for our schools, fight for our educators, fight for our community, they've taught me so much. You understand our governing role. You have modeled it time and time again. So I say thank you. So.
I'll go. I sat with you and had the opportunity to learn from you, and I appreciate your leadership for me as a new Board member of helping me to understand governance and the role of the School Board and the community, and your commitment to our legislative process is commendable. Thank you so much.
I think all of us around this Board table have learned from Jerry more than we probably realized at the time, and probably frankly, more than I realize even now. Having had the opportunity as Springfield's representative to the MSBA Board, having had the opportunity to observe Jerry in his other life, like his third or fourth or fifth other life as a MSBA leadership team member, it's really quite extraordinary. Beyond being a really good human, again, he has a very clear sense of what, a clear sense of what Boards do, what they do not do, and what they do when they do it at their best. And I think he exemplifies that. And I will miss him. All of us will miss him. And I can promise you, from the littlest of littles, early childhood education to those business partnerships, SBS will miss Jerry. All I can say, makes me feel slightly better, is that while we're losing him, Missouri Public Education is not. He will remain as rugged an advocate as he is, probably the most respected voice in public education in Missouri. I'll miss you.
Well, I told, I've already talked to Jerry, told him I probably won't be able to say too much, but I'll try to address my stuff a little bit. I look at Jerry as, and having known Jerry many years even before Board service, and I think I've shared this with Jerry, when I worked for the district, and we had various committees, we always needed to have community members to serve on various committees. That was an important thing, and not always easy to find someone in the community that would do that. And everyone always threw out the name, Jerry Lee, call Jerry, Jerry will do it, because he was so invested in our school district before, prior to his Board work, and he served on a number of committees that I recall that he worked on before he didn't take him onto the Board. But while we're describing Jerry, and I talked to him a little bit about, I see him as for my Board service, because he was on the Board when I came on, as a pillar of knowledge, great advice, and an encourager. He has so much experience with state activities as well as district. And I think for me especially, a great calmer, calmer, that's the word, I was calling aspect, because I would call Jerry and say, okay, what is up with this? And Jerry would, okay, provide me some historical knowledge on that, and then kind of talk me down. So, and that was as a new Board member, and I get pretty wound up about that. So I appreciate he's always willing to take my calls, and always willing to call me back, and always willing to try and answer any questions I have. So that's not going to stop, because I still have your number, and still be calling you for your help in terms of what's going on at state level. And we are so fortunate to have you in your position to help us along. So it's a great thing, and I have a little bit more to say about all three of you, but I'll wait till I get to Bruce, so then I'll all add in.
Here you.
I'll miss you.
Here you.
For 15 years, we've served on the Board together. That's a lot of meetings. Jerry was involved, though, with the school before he was on the School Board, which I think is extremely important. He brought to the Board, he didn't represent the Board when he was at Pershing or Glendale or wherever, he represented the community himself, Lynn, his family, and he was actively involved without Board service. But then he was able to bring that expertise to the Board as an active community member and active parent with his kids in the school. And we both share the passion with MSBA and have been involved with that, to know we're not an island. We're one of 524 or 525 now districts in the state of Missouri, and although we are the largest, we're one. And what happens in Jefferson City is important to all of us, and it affects all of us. And his involvement at that level, even before he started working for MSBA, was invaluable to this Board, because he could see things coming that we could be able to either get on board with, or hopefully if it was something that needed to not happen, we could rally behind that. So his service has not just been to the Board, it's, it has been, and I've enjoyed working with Jerry, because he is, we sometimes may think a little different, but that made me a better Board member. So he's willing to do, express his opinion in a way that you respect that opinion. So I'm just glad he will continue to serve school districts in the way that he's going to do that, because I think we'll need him there more than ever.
My turn? Her.
Okay. Try to breathe. But I was thinking of the three words that I think of most associated with you. One, you are kind, which is something I really value. You are kind even when I think that it's pushing too far, but you're still kind. You are positive and upbeat. The thing I will remember in that category is that whatever it was, you were always sure we could get it done. You always believed we could get it done. And the last thing, and maybe most important to me, is that you are trustworthy. You said it, and I knew I could count on it. It is a valuable thing, being an ally, friend, colleague, and I appreciate it.
Floor is yours, Jerry.
Oh, this could be a mistake. Could be a huge mistake. Never give me the floor, give me the microphone. Because I'm not usually lost for words. But it's been an honor and a privilege to serve this community on this Board. Very grateful and truly blessed to have that opportunity to do that and work with great people. I thank the community for having the confidence, Steven, let me and put me on the Board. I mean, that's, thank you guys for that, whoever's out there that did, to do that. Thank the administration, got a great team, I'll talk about that a little bit more in a minute. Great teachers, great staff. It's the best. It's also, it's given me an opportunity to do some things at the statewide and the national level that I would have never had the opportunity to do if not service on this Board. And Bruce has had that opportunity to do, and it's incredibly rewarding to be able to do that. Been a, would never give it up, 15 years, it's been incredibly rewarding time, and I love it. People ask me all the time, why do you do this? Why do you put up with some of the critics and the complaints and that kind of stuff? And they go, it's such a thankless job. And it really, really frustrates me to hear that, because that is so far from the truth than anything. It's, it's just amazing to be involved in creating and helping the next generation, whatever that might be. I have no idea what's in store for these kids at graduation, but having a hand in that in some way is just incredibly rewarding. You hear the complaints, and you hear the criticism, all I've got to do is go to a classroom, go see a teacher in a classroom, go to graduation, go to the Rose banquet, done. Recharge, period. It's just like an instant recharge to do that. And we come to Board meetings, this is not education in this room. This is government. Education's out in the classroom, where it occurs at the ground level. That's, that's education. We're not educators. That's not us. We're governments. And I think we always have to keep that in mind. But I also think if we don't have some critics, just to be honest, we're not pushing the envelope. We're going to have critics when you do and make changes. And I don't see that as bad. It'd be kind of boring otherwise. But I think it's always, if you're going to be a pioneer, you're going to take arrows. And when you take arrows, you create opportunities for the next people behind you. The settlers who come behind you are the ones who are going to benefit from what you, we took as arrows to get something back. And I'm proud of that. We've done great things in this district. I'm not going to list any of all of them, because I'd run out. But I encourage you to continue with that, focusing on kids. We do, and that's appreciated. We have a great district, fabulous district, it's one of the best in the States, and I see a lot of districts every day and talk to them. We're not perfect. Do we have issues? Absolutely. Do we have, do you all have work to do? Absolutely. But are you going to find solutions? Absolutely. And that's going to happen. And I've got confidence in the Board moving forward that we're going to accomplish that. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to attend the Missouri School Board Association Legislative Forum along with Cole and John. Springfield came up many times. Districts look to Springfield as a benchmark and want to do things that Springfield's doing. And that's not by accident. I go to regional meetings, they talk about things, they talk about launch, and how they would have not got through the pandemic without launch. Now, is that visionary? Is that dumb luck? I don't know. Doesn't make any difference. It worked. And I can tell you right now, districts did not get, we were much better prepared than most districts, because we had that in place. If you had a crystal ball or whatever it was. But they look at us because we do the right things, and we do the things right. And that's what we do, and have done it since I've been involved. One of the things I think is critical is we are, we have an innovative mindset. And I know that doesn't go without pain, whether it's external or internal, that doesn't go without pain. But I hope that you continue that plan. You're going to hear critics, you're going to hear all that kind of stuff that... You're going to hear critics, you're going to hear all that kind of stuff that, about this. And the one thing to keep in mind, and I think Jill, not Jill, Alina and I, I think heard, maybe Jill might have been there too, I don't know, on one of our community visits, you've got to separate the noise from the signal and understand what is just noise out there and what is actual signal and listen to that and hear that. I've had the chance to work with fantastic board members over my 15 years. I think I counted in two great superintendents. I think I counted 16 board members that I've worked with over the years, and six of them are in here. I thought, that's a lot of board members. And then I thought, 15 years, that's not many board members. And I thought, that's a great thing. That tells me that community has confidence in people they elect to the board. And there's tenure and continuity, expertise and confidence to do what you do. And I thought that was real, to me, that was a telltale sign of importance because our community loves our kids. This community loves our kids, period. And this is all about governance and I'll talk about, and not agendas. You said that, Jill. And we work as a cohesive group and that's why I think we've been successful. We work together. We have the same goals. We have, we come about in different directions. That's okay. Still the same goal. And that is what's best for kids. And I'm sad that I'm not going to be able to work with the new superintendent, a new leadership team directly. I'm certainly going to hopefully work indirectly and do that. And, but I think Dr. Lath and Dr. Malfer are going to be absolutely fantastic and going to follow in the footsteps of these great people and, and to do that. Congratulations to John, Harold, Kathy for your, whatever your next thing you're going to do, chase grandbabies or whatever you guys are going to do. Thank you for a great ride. I mean, I've seen it happen. Job well, well, well done to do that. I want to thank my family. Lynn, who's put up with. I know, but I'll be gone a little more. I know. Time being gone, whether it's here or it's somewhere else in Jeff City. I love her for letting me do that and taking the opportunity. She's benefited some too. She's been on a few trips where it's been, been fun. Right Pat? No, you under the bus? Three kids went through SPS, got a granddaughter at SPS. My heart's here. And I said before, this is like family. When you come on this board, you don't come on this board by yourself. You come on this board with your family. And we know everybody's family. We know that. You know, we, we want to know what your kids are doing in college, how the puppy's doing, how the grandkid is and your grandkids, what they're doing. That's important to this board to operate as a family. Do we bicker? Do we disagree? Absolutely. But at the end of the day, we're still failing. And that's the way it should be. And that, to me, gets things done. I'll tell you right, you've got challenging times ahead of you. Public education is being attacked at the time. And I hope you guys are vigilant about that. And it's not because public education's failing. Because it's a $900 billion business and people want the money. And so, I, if it was failing, it'd be a different story, but that's not the reason. And that's not saying we don't have problems at all and we don't have pockets. So, you know, the time I spent, you know, the return on investment for me has just been incredible for the time I've spent. It's a great payback. I wouldn't, wouldn't put it any other way. Just keep in mind, we're going to get through this pandemic, but don't, never pass up a crisis. And we're going to learn from this and things are not going to get back to normal. And we shouldn't go back to normal. We should come out of it better and, and learn from this. Same thing could happen. It may not be another pandemic. It could be a tornado that tears a building up, whatever. Things like this are going to happen and so we need to be prepared for that. Just, I can't get away with making some advice. A few things. Continue to communicate with the community. Be close to the community. Engage with them and find out their pulse and what they're thinking. It's not at the board meeting. That's not the place to do it. But we need to go out to them and not make them come to us. Go out to them and do that. Continue to innovate. Keep innovating. One of the best books I ever read was, If It Ain't Broke, Break It. We get in this rut sometimes of not looking at, if there's not a thing we do that shouldn't be, couldn't be revised, improved, eliminated or expanded with that eye that you guys, and you have done that. Just continue to do that. Congratulations to the new board members. Congratulations. I would give you two pieces of advice or maybe just one. It's not a spectator sport. You've got to get off the bench and get in the game. And it's not two hours twice a month. You'll learn that pretty quick. Get engaged with the community, the district, the state, the national. It's more than just sitting in here. And just don't get into it thinking that that's it. To be successful, you've got to get engaged and do that. This district has a great future. I'm so optimistic about where it's going, what it's doing. We'll get through the bumps. We'll get through the hurdles in front of us, whether we go around the walls or we knock them down. That may never, we'll get around them. I just want to say thank you for your friendship, lifelong friends. You're great people. I'll miss this. I'm not going away. As Nicole said, I'm not, this is not my funeral. She said it's not my funeral. So, I'll be around, but I won't be sitting here doing that. But I'll see you all at MSBA functions and stuff like that. But just thank you and good luck and I just love you all.
Thank you, Jerry. Thank you. Last but not least, we want to take a moment to honor Bruce Renner, who has served with us since 1994, 27 years. Served as SPS Board President in 98 and 99, VP in 96 and 97, MSBA President in '05 and Bruce, I have a couple remarks from a couple board members who have served alongside you. First, I'll start with Tom Crater, and he also mentions Jerry as well. This is Tom's quote to you. "I've served on the board for only six years, a tiny fraction of the time Bruce and Jerry have spent. While their devotion to the students in our district was apparent, both were able to see the schools as an integral part of the community and its needs to be appropriately responsive. The contacts that each made at the state level helped Springfield be a strong advocate for education. I served as president during the state audit. Bruce and Jerry both had an aura of, quote, 'calm brought on by experience.' That helped keep me sane." Chris Callen shares to you, Bruce. "Bruce, I remember calling you when I decided to run for the board. And even though we didn't know each other, you spent time informing and encouraging me. I always appreciated that about you. I'm not sure what the board table will be like without you in one of the seats, but rest assured, you have been a positive influence on the quality of public education in Springfield and beyond. And that influence will be felt for many years to come. Well done, my friend." My remarks to you, Bruce, is that at the heart of who you are, you're, you are an educator yourself. And your commitment to our teachers, our students and public education has been a theme of your life. When I think about a few things that stand out within your board service, I think about your unwavering support for our teachers. Unwavering. Knowing that you cultivate, knowing that that teacher-student relationship is about cultivating that relationship in order to see the student transform. And I've seen you demonstrate and advocate for our teachers time and time again because of that level of commitment. You have long supported expanding sports and extracurricular activities for our students so that they, our students, have the opportunities to stay engaged with their learning and to grow. You have modeled, that you've modeled to me that you can share your voice here at the board table in both support and concerns of various issues, and yet your commitment is unwavering. You know that I respectfully refer to you as the ghost of Christmas past because, because you bring incredible institutional knowledge of 27 years, Bruce, from the impact of a financial recession, from the ever-changing federal and state policies to the changing superintendents. You always bring that institutional perspective that has helped guide me and my fellow board colleagues. And your wisdom is a gift. It's really a gift. We are indebted, indebted to your faithful, faithful service, Bruce. Thank you. Jerry?
I want to go before everybody else does. So, I don't get emotional about this. But I, the thing I remember most about Bruce, and Bruce has seen good times and bad times. He's been through both. But he was always level. And that was doing the right thing, whatever. And times were tough, I mean, going back in the late 90s, mid 90s, it wasn't a lot of fun. And I was an outsider looking in and it was not fun. I felt for him and the rest of the board at that time. But he was pretty much a rock when it came to doing the things that needed to be done for continuity purposes and making sure the district was in the right thing because when Bruce calls me and wants to talk, I know that I need to be thinking about what we're talking about. Because Bruce is committed to doing the right thing in the right way. Always, always has. And he can be questioned it, he may not agree with it, he may disagree, and it's always better because Bruce's input is there. And I've always, I've always looked up to Bruce as mentor, knowing that, you know, if I can be like Bruce, that would be pretty dang cool. And his service on MSBA, I love it. I mean, it's still, we still talk about this. And I don't mean that negatively either, at all. I mean that very positively. And there are people that are there that work and that worked with you on your, your team. And, you know, I've, I've had the pleasure of traveling with Bruce, traveling with Pat to places. I mean, they are a great, great, great family. And his commitment to public school, I mean, he's covered the spectrum, as you said, birth to death on education. And that realm of knowledge that you bring is just, well, it's amazing. And, you know, I, I think of people that, you know, that hoard stuff and have information and stuff like that. I mean, from an information institutional education, he's a hoarder. He's got it. And he remembers it and brings it out. And that perspective is so, so valuable of, I went through this pothole in 19, or 2001. Just don't go through this one again. And here's why. Here's what we learned. And so, history doesn't repeat itself, hopefully. And so, and that's, to me, that's the value of what Bruce brings is he's seen both sides. He's seen the dark and the light side of it. And his perspective is incredible, you know. Bruce, how would this go? How would this have happened 20 years ago? What happened 20 years ago? And, you know, I think that respect that you have from not just us, but the staff, the people in the field, they know Bruce Renner is behind them, lifting them up and holding them up. And that's a pretty comforting feeling to know that I've got your back. And you do, always have.
Thanks.
Closest, I'll be quick. I just want to thank you for providing me with your, sharing with me your wisdom. I appreciate your institutional knowledge and I appreciate what you shared with me about how to make this board move forward in productive ways. One of the things that I know is that, the one consistent thing is that everything changes. And you have helped me to see how things come. They ebb and they flow over time and, you know, sometimes we're up and sometimes they're down and we have to stick to it regardless. So, thank you for your commitment. I appreciate how, you know, you're not always one who lets your voice be heard all the time. You don't push your own agenda. It's kind of like, I'm going to say my words until they're really important and then you put them out there. And I appreciate that. So, thank you so much.
Hannah?
Go.
So, this will not surprise anyone, but I would like to start by inviting one of the granddaughters up here to get a better photo. Be with me. You got your phone? Because you can see Papa better from here.
That's right. This is, this is Liv, Bruce's granddaughter. She's a third grader.
She came without a phone. Give us a minute. We're going to regroup.
Right.
I want her to get a good picture of Grandpa.
That's right.
Okay. So, here are my thoughts, Bruce. You're an icon on this board. I think of you as a human database of SPS information and history for generations. You are consistent. You are a consistent voice of what is best for the district, for the students, for the teachers and staff. And you are a, from my perspective, watching it for these years, an excellent family man. You are a great dad. And as I've been taught to say it properly tonight, great Papa.
Yeah.
Thank you for your service.
So, whenever I'm thinking about Bruce, the word commitment, commitment. And there's a lot of descriptors goes along with that is time. I mean, we talked about 27 years. There's probably some folks in this room that you may just be 27 years. Not much longer. And Bruce has been doing this. 27 years. So, the commitment, and those of us on the board realize what kind of time commitment just a year involves. His commitment, his time, his effort, his caring, his concern, all that is in this community. And I think when you add up Bruce's 27 years, Jerry's 17 years, just six years, that's 50 years. And if you think, how to put some quantitative piece to this? And that in that 50 years' time, and if they have made decisions that have impacted 25,000 kids, and I know we haven't had 25,000 kids in our district since you started this, but, you know, the degree you're looking at having an impact in some way of more than one and a quarter million students and then their families. So, those decisions have been made around this table. And Bruce's 27 years, you have been through two, eight, 12 generations of students. So, you've gone with them through kindergarten. So you've gone with them through kindergarten, graduation, two times, two steps. And that is an amazing amount of time. And I appreciated the times that I called Bruce, and I usually start my conversations with, "Bruce? Is this a good time to talk?" And I always say, "Do you remember when?" And that's how our conversations start because I need some refresher when something happened in our district. And then if Bruce calls me and we talk, and if Bruce starts a conversation with, "You know, I just don't know about this." I know I need to listen because he has some concerns, or he has heard something, or he has something that he wants you to talk about. So I will miss that. But I'm not saying that I'm not so going to call you at times and say, "Bruce, is this a good time? And do you remember when?" Because we go back 20 years. But just for your amazing commitment to the families and the children of this district, or your 27-year service, I don't even know that you can put a time, amount, value to the amount of hours you spend. But our city is a better place. So thank you.
Thank you. It's not a lot that I can add. One thing uniquely I can say, however, Bruce has accomplished something I didn't think possible. I have articles of clothing older than your tenures on the blue. With Bruce, I do not. That's accomplished something big. And I like, I like the term icon. But one of the things that impresses me most about Bruce because is that icons can either be enablers or dinosaurs. And he's got immense institutional knowledge. He knows all the stuff. He knows where the bodies are buried. He might have buried some of them.
Make no admissions.
You know, loving support.
Legal counsel.
But he does not use that history as an iron cage. He uses it as an incubator. I've never once heard him say, "That's not the way we do it." Or, "Ah, we tried that, didn't work, let's move on." Never did he say that. And if anybody on the face of the earth is justified in saying that, it would be Bruce, and he never did. And that speaks volumes to who he is intellectually, just who he is as an authority. And he's just a very good guy. Because he was entitled to that sort of, to claim privilege of seniority or whatever, but he just didn't do it. And he is a teacher. The other thing that really impresses me and has always impressed me about Bruce is he knows that the real work at the district happens, as you said, happens in classrooms, et cetera. And he knows the role that this board plays in enabling that work. And he knows what role this board should not play in getting in the way of the work that is going on out there in the classroom. So if you had to call central casting really fine. This is your time.
Thanks, Charles.
I think I'm going to ask Stephen to move back just a little bit because I'm talking to people back. I don't, this has been my chair for a long time, as we've said. And it is that I don't, to talk and not know what's going on behind me is, I really don't like.
I'd be offended by that.
No way, I can't. I do want, my wife, Pat, is here. She'll wave. My three kids, Lance, Liz, and Jill, and then granddaughter Carly and Liv, Olivia. Couple are busy. I do have a, yeah, I do want, I have one. I don't know if I get 27 minutes.
27 years, you're not out of time. Okay.
This may be one of a kind. Make me throw away all the others.
Awesome. In your garden. I love it. I love it.
Charles, I think you'll appreciate these data points. Get my glasses here. As we've talked about that.
Should we get the glasses up?
I've served with seven superintendents. If you count the dual superintendency as two people. 28 board members. And I'm like you, Jerry, really 27 years with 28 members is not many. It really isn't. I've run eight elections. All happened to be contested. I'm not sure what that says about me running. Besides the first one, which I lost by 10 votes, and a lot of people don't know that. But I, I count, it would be over 700 school board meetings that I've done. 40,000 graduates would have graduated or more, or more. That's conservative. So all of those things, I'm proud of. There have only been three administrative assistants since I've been on the board. Noreen Doss, Carol Roper, Kathy Lou. And 27 years, which says something about the people that serve our board in another way. 27 years on the board, that's half of Pat and I's married life. I've been on the board almost half, 55 years. Another data point. 26 years I worked in the district as a teacher and counselor. And one year I worked as a part-time custodian when I was still in college, and I'm going to count that because I learned a lot that year. And so that's 54 years. 54 years at SPS. Why would anyone serve on this board for 27 years? And I've been asked that. And Carol, you're right, there's no annuity, there's no 401K. There's not a check in the mail. None of those things happen. But let me tell you a little bit about my history and why I do this. Allergies are getting bad. I was raised in a smaller town. Fulton, Missouri, which you'll know about since your son went to Westminster. That's there. And grandparents and aunts and uncles were there. So extended family were all there. And here's, my grandparents on my mother's side actually moved, they were farmers. They moved from California, Missouri, to Fulton, Missouri. At that point in time, they had five children. But one of those children was deaf. And the only place at that in the early 1900s where you could receive education for deaf children was at the School for the Deaf, which was located in Fulton. So they picked up their family, moved, bought another farm, ended up having three more children there. But that's because my grandmother couldn't stand, at that point in time, it's a boarding school. You brought your child, you left them. They stayed there, you saw them at Christmas time. Think the early 1900s now. The transportation wasn't great. You left them, you saw them at Christmas, and you saw them at summertime. And that's what it was. And she just said, "I couldn't do that." So they were, they moved, and they could see their son every weekend because they were there. Now, that's valuing education. That's valuing education. All of my mother's brothers and sisters, seven others, attended a one-room schoolhouse. They rode a horse, bareback, to school. When I was in Fulton, the school was still there, still wasn't a school. I'm not sure that's what people mean when they say back to basics. I'm sure they're not including the horse. But it was also one through eight grades. So it wasn't, by the way, an open classroom at that point in time. So oftentimes, what we think is new is not new. It's not new. We've just changed on how we do it as far as education's concerned. All were high school graduates. And I think in the early 1900s through the 1930s or 40s, you, that was rare. But that's how much they valued education. Three had advanced degrees. One had a doctorate and was superintendent of deaf schools in North Carolina and Connecticut. And my uncle, that was deaf, ended up with his degree from Gallaudet College, which is the only college in the nation at that time where students who were deaf could actually go and get a degree. And he taught at University of Kentucky. So it, education has been my background. My mother and her older sister, two years older, couldn't attend college because that was during the Depression, and there was no money. They were just glad, they were just happy that they had a farm to supply the basics. One thing about high school, she couldn't take typing because she was from the country. And the girls from the country couldn't take typing, only those that lived in the city. So that was interesting. She, that part was, she was sorry she couldn't take typing, but her, the biggest thing was she could not attend college. She got a job at 16 and 1/2 cents an hour at the dime store and was glad to have it. My aunt got a job at the shoe factory for 25 cents an hour and was glad to have it during the Depression. So I grew up with modeled behavior. Somebody mentioned that earlier. It was with work and with the value of education. I didn't know that as a child, but as I got older, I realized all those things that would happen. And my dad served in World War II and made it back, even though his ship was sunk in the English Channel. But from the time we got back to Fulton, they saved $5 a month for my college education. Now, I know that doesn't seem like much, but then it was a huge sacrifice. I didn't know that then, but it was. And what my mother would have me do, I think there was, there was a reason for this. Once I was old enough to ride my bike, it's about eight or 10 blocks to downtown, and there was a savings loan in the corner. And you took your little book in with your money, and they wrote it in the book. And I guess, I don't know if there's another record, or if you lost your book, you were in trouble. But she trusted me with the money and the fact that I was doing that, and they were going to not have money get in the way like it did for her. So again, people modeled all of the work ethic. They modeled service. They modeled why education was important for me. So again, why would I serve for 27 years? I just was fortunate to have adults in my, in my life that were family members that had the value of education, work, and the service. Those three things. Education, work, and service. And they're my value system. So I, that's just who I am. And those are the three things that I believe are extremely important. When my terms were up, and there were times, and Jerry mentioned some of those times, that, you know, you had to think again. But why did I do it? Because the work was never finished. There was always something else we could do to make things better. So the work was never finished. And I felt like that I've tried during those 27 years to focus on where the learning takes place and that environment, and whatever it takes to make teaching and learning happen between students and teachers is what we need to do. That's, that's the focus. That's what we have to do. And we try, and sometimes we make mistakes on what we do, and then you go back and you do something else and try again. So I continued to run. I felt like now, for the first time, it was time for a change. Somebody else needs to pick up and move us ahead. And I'm fully confident we will be better. The district will be better. Now, and somebody mentioned this, and I think, Carol and John, since you're going to talk about the budget, that maybe you should look into buying those crystal balls. Because I really think there are some individuals and groups that have them because they know what's going to happen in the future. And here we are, as here, people be as board members, and we operate with data and research. And it would be easier if you just had the crystal ball that would absolutely predict recessions and pandemics and when the formula wasn't going to be funded and what jobs are going to be out there 10 to 15 years from now because I truly don't, don't know. If you had a crystal ball that, that this job, this job would be easier for those left and for the new. So we want to consider it, but don't go to the lowest bidder. Don't get one of those cloudy things. Make sure it stays in focus. So my journey really is not over. It's just changing.
That's right.
It's just changing. Thank you all.
Thank you, Bruce. Kathy, if you'll get our gifts for our outgoing board members. You can certainly hand them to them. Or if you want to take a picture. But that's probably what's.
Well, this one would be yours because it has your name on it. And this one would be yours because it has your name.
Oh, how nice. That's our just. That's awesome. Where do you want, where do you want me to go?
Go get the three of them together.
I'm going to direct you up there for pictures.
Get that in the background.
Thank you so much.
We, we will, before we close this segment of the meeting, I just want to thank Dan, Lynn, and Pat, all three of you for supporting your spouses on this journey because you are kind of pseudo, board members, when you're a part of this journey. So thank you so much for your support through the years. This concludes this segment of the current board's operation. We will take a moment to transition, and there's a lot of guests who will now be exiting the building. And our new, newly sworn members can come take a stand next to the podium here. But we'll take just a few moments to make some transitions here. You guys are.
You guys are perfect right there.
You guys are perfect right there. I thought somebody was taking a picture. Sorry.
I will invite our Greene County Clerk, Mr. Shane Schuler, to come up and swear in our brand-new board members.
Are we doing masks on or?
That is your call. As you get close of your distance, you're fine. You have to take it off.
I'll take mine off. Guys, I'm going to do the same. It's up to you. Your call. All right. On your hand or gift, I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the laws in the constitutional state of Missouri, and I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties as school director, in and for the School District of Springfield, Artville, Dream County, Missouri, do the best in my ability, so help me God. We have these. All right. I'll sign it. I'll give this to you, Dan. All right. All right. There you go. All right. We're done.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Schuler. Have a great evening. Welcome, board members. We will proceed with our next matter of business, which is to elect a president. Is there a nomination for board president?
I'd like to move an interest of continuity and leadership. I'd like to nominate Lena Leonard.
I have a motion for Lena Leonard. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second. Are there any further nominations for board president? Hearing none, nominations are closed, and I will conduct a roll call vote for board president. Denise?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Charles?
Aye.
Sharita?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The next agenda item is election of treasurer. Just a moment. Is there a nomination for treasurer?
Oh, I would like to nominate Carol Embry.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Sharita? Okay. Are there any further nominations for treasurer? Okay. Seeing none, I will call the roll for Carol Embry as treasurer. Denise?
Aye.
Miriam?
Epstein.
Danielle?
Aye.
Scott?
Epstein.
Charles?
Aye.
Sharita?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes. The board supports Carol Embry for treasurer. Is there, our next agenda item is election of secretary. Is there a nomination for secretary?
I'll nominate Epstein.
Okay. Right. Is there a second?
Second.
Charles with a second. Are there any further nominations of secretary? Okay. If not, the nominations are closed. I'll conduct the roll call. Denise?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Scott?
Epstein.
Charles?
Aye.
Sharita?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes. The board supports Carol Embry for treasurer. Is there, our next agenda item is election of secretary. Is there a nomination for secretary?
I'll nominate Epstein.
Okay. Right. Is there a second?
Second.
Charles with a second. Are there any further nominations of secretary? Okay. If not, the nominations are closed. I'll conduct the roll call. Denise?
Aye.
Miriam?
Epstein.
Danielle?
Aye.
Scott?
Epstein.
Charles?
Aye.
Sharita?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes. The board supports Carol Embry for treasurer. Is there, our next agenda item is election of secretary. Is there a nomination for secretary?
I'll nominate Epstein.
Okay. Right. Is there a second?
Second.
Charles with a second. Are there any further nominations of secretary? Okay. If not, the nominations are closed. I'll conduct the roll call. Denise?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Charles?
Aye.
Sharita?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The board supports Kathy Luton for secretary. Our next agenda item is the appointment of substitute secretary. And our historical practice of our district is to have the superintendent serve as the substitute secretary in cases where the secretary is unavailable to perform the duties as outlined in policy B, C, C. Is there a nomination for substitute secretary?
I'll make that nomination for John Bowman as our substitute secretary in July with Katherine Dean, not in the future.
Okay. All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Okay. Are there any other nominations for substitute secretary? Okay. Hearing none, I will call a roll call vote. Denise?
Aye.
Miriam?
No.
Danielle?
Aye.
Scott?
Epstein.
Charles?
Aye.
Sharita?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The board appoints the superintendent to serve as substitute secretary in the absence of the board secretary. Our next agenda item is to adjourn the reorganization meeting. And are we prepared, Kathy, to, to vote electronically? Are we prepared to vote electronically?
Yeah. I have, I need a spot. I'm going to just.
As a point of clarification, we don't have to adjourn the reorg. We're going to start a new meeting. We are, I can adjourn the reorg meeting as stated. Now, we will all need to, you can hit the meetings tab and join the second study session meeting there to join the meeting. Does anybody need any help with that transition on board docs?
Can you get us going?
Oh, good. Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, that's good.
Okay. Kathy, are you, you're ready? Okay. All right. We will now open up our official study session, and our first item is the roll call. And Kathy, please let the record state that all of our board members are in attendance. The next agenda item is the pledge. For those of you who would be willing to join me, I will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next agenda item is to approve the agenda. The recommended action is that the board approve the agenda as presented. Charles, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Denise, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, we are ready to vote. The prompt will appear on your screen. It takes just a second.
It showed up.
It's there now.
Oh, no, hers hasn't.
I do not have one either. I'll call verbal. Okay. Danielle?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
Denise?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Charles?
Aye.
Sharita?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes. Next agenda item is public comments to address agenda item, and I will read our board statement. The Board of Education welcomes comments from the audience about issues being discussed. It is recommended that requests to speak be submitted prior to the beginning of the meeting. Comments will be limited to five minutes for each speaker and will be timed by the board secretary. It is inappropriate to address the board about individual students or individual staff members by name in open meeting. If you have concerns about individuals, these concerns should be addressed through the appropriate administrative supervisors, either in the schools or in the district office. The board uses this time during our meeting to listen to comments and/or concerns for the public, but will not comment or engage with the public during this meeting. If you have materials that you would like to share, please provide them to the board secretary prior to speaking, and she will distribute them to board members. Kathy, I believe I have one person with an agenda item. Okay. And that is Roy Holland. Good evening, Roy.
Good evening. For President O'Hanlon, new members and members, I am honored to be the first speaker to address this group. And I will get it done in time. I used to be a legislator, and so I do legislative topics, and there are some things going on in Jeff City that are of interest here. There's two bills out there that relate to the election process of members, and Bill 253 was voted on a day or two ago on the House floor. It was passed. Now it comes back in two or three days again for the final passage. So it is progressing in the process. There's another bill that's sponsored by the School District of Jefferson City. This is one that they're interested in, and it would allow any district in the state of Missouri to convert their district from at-large to sub-districts if the board decided or on petition of the public. That one is somewhat behind it in the process. Things change. There's four weeks left to go. So I've got some time left, and there are a few other topics that we've all discussed about before and need to be reiterated. There's some new thinking here. And the first one is board support for expanded dialogue with the public. And that, to say that the no-response policy has been established here for some time. It may be popular here, but on the outside, it seems to be in some people's mind arrogant and condescending. This can be changed easily by using time limits, as you've had before. And this is what they do in the city council. They have time limits, and you could arrange it very much that way. We all agree that teachers are the most important staff in all school districts around Missouri, yet in many people's minds, the teachers' minds, and in my mind, they seem to be disrespected and estranged by this board. We can change that. It doesn't have to stay that way. We can invite representative of the teachers or the NEA to be present at this board, provide a written public report of their comments and concerns and recommendations directly to the board, and that way, without any screening or censorship by administration, which may occur. Also, another big group that's scarcely seen here are the parents. Who do you work for? Is it the parents of the district? You need to decide that. But we could likewise invite a parent's representative to be present at this board, just like we're going to do possibly with the teachers. That would be a welcome and refreshing point of view, and you would learn a lot, I think, by having them present and not feeling that they are outside the influence of the board. Another question here. Who runs the district? Okay? This is not entirely clear. And in February last year, this board approved MSIP 6, L6A. And what is that about? That's how the state recommends the district should function. And this one was about delegate operational decisions to the superintendent and the administration. Okay? Maybe that's simple, maybe not. Missouri education statutes do not authorize clearly that elected school boards can transfer their elected authority to employed officials. So that needs to be clarified before you go too far along. Another one of interest and concern at this time needs to be the role and the diligence of district legal services during the search process and the hiring of our new superintendent. Do they have any oversight, any commitment to the integrity of the process? The hiring of this person did evoke response in other places where she had served before, and this is widely known to the public in Springfield. Next question is who here unanimously hired Principal Brown for our troubled Central High School? Nobody seems to wants to be a leader at Central. What have you decided? Why is that going on? At any rate, that person was unanimously selected, yet it indicates in his records that he was assistant principal only, never full principal, and this was a small high school in Arkansas. Wonder how that happened? How are these decisions made? Certainly new members of this board and the public, I think, are entitled to know how you make decisions. Let's be more transparent in all of these things. And finally, here's a wild suggestion. Let's get out of the boardroom and get out and visit some schools. You've got some troubled schools out there. One of those is Central. It used to be the shining star of the district, and it doesn't seem to be able to attract anybody to leadership.
Thank you, Roy. Thank you.
Thank you. You need to do better.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is information reports. There are no information reports. Our next agenda item is preliminary contracts, agreements, and change orders. Welcome Carol Embry to the podium.
Thank you. You did bring all of my information because I believe I have next two agendas.
That's right.
So this evening, we are providing for you, as is our normal routine, the listing for contracts and agreements, and that includes purchase orders and other types of work that is taking place in the system. We do break it down by four categories. So we have the $15,000 and a penny to $499,999.99, so less than $500,000. And then we also have a smaller grouping that's $15,000 or less for each of those items. And as you know, anything that is $500,000 or greater, we bring to you as a separate agenda item, and that continues to be our practice. So you have the next two weeks to observe this information, and if you have any questions, I would be happy for you to send those my way, and we'll get some answers for you. If you have any questions this evening, I will attempt to answer those as well.
Okay. Any pressing questions for Carol? Otherwise, as she mentioned, you have two weeks to review these because it's not a voting item tonight. Okay? All right. Thank you, Carol. We'll move on to our next agenda item, which is board policy, and there are no board policies for review tonight.
One of those is Central. It used to be the shining star of the district and it doesn't seem to be able to attract anybody to leadership.
Thank you, Roy.
Thank you. You need to do better.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is information reports. There are no information reports. Our next agenda item is preliminary contracts, agreements, and change orders. Welcome Carol Embry to the podium.
Thank you. You did bring all of my information because I believe I have next two agendas items. So this evening, we are providing for you, as is our normal routine, the listing for contracts and agreements, and that includes purchase orders and other types of work that is taking place in the system. We do break it down by four categories. So we have the $15,000 and a penny to $499,999.99, so less than $500,000. And then we also have a smaller grouping that's $15,000 or less for each of those items. And as you know, anything that is $500,000 or greater, we bring to you as a separate agenda item, and that continues to be our practice. So you have the next two weeks to observe this information. And if you have any questions, I would be happy for you to send those my way and we'll get some answers for you. If you have any questions this evening, I will attempt to answer those as well.
Okay. Any pressing questions for Carol? Otherwise, as she mentioned, you have two weeks to review these because it's not a voting item tonight. Okay, all right. Thank you, Carol. We'll move on to our next agenda item, which is board policy. And there are no board policies for review tonight. Our next agenda item is new business, and there is no new business tonight. We'll move on to our next agenda item, which is unfinished business, the 2021-2022 budget development. And Carol, I believe you're going to share with us that.
Yes. Go CAFS and Health Benefit Trust Fund first. So we've continued on this journey and let's try and get this book here. So again, this is a reminder of all of the funds that the district manages. And we have four primary funds that we report to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. There are some sub-funds within those. We also manage two fiduciary funds, and that would be for Health Benefit Trust and Go CAFS. And those are the two funds that we are reporting on to you this evening. It's not going to work, so I'm going to do this. This shows you our budget presentation schedule. And as you know, we are at April 13th, so we'll cover these four funds this evening. It will go pretty quickly. We do have page numbers on the presentation slides, so if you have any questions, if you would be kind and go ahead and make note of those, and we'll catch those at the end. And then we'll move forward then with capital projects on April 27th and the general and teachers' funds, May 18th, followed by the full budget presentation and recommendation June 8th, and then secure approval at the June 22nd meeting. Missouri statute requires that a board approves a budget prior to July 1 or the start of our new fiscal year. So fiduciary funds are special accounts. These are not reported to the state of Missouri. They are separately maintained in a custodial capacity by the district for a unique purpose. The resources don't belong to the district. They are audited as part of our regular financial audit each time, but they are maintained very separately, and that includes interest earnings and all of that. So the first one is Go CAFS, and we do serve as the fiscal agent for the Go CAFS program. That's Greater Ozark Center for Advanced Professional Studies. And we began that fiscal management when it was created August of 2015. It has a board of directors that meets independently. It also includes business leaders meeting with those superintendents for the management of that program. And our Springfield Chamber of Commerce is contracted to assist in recruiting and managing business partnerships. And what that provides for our students and students in participating districts would be unique experiences of a professional nature that give them real-life business experiences along with the education process. We do have certificated teachers who are providing the education resources for them. We have within that structure for the governance piece, these three different categories. We have business partnerships and support. We have a strand advisory committee, so those are the people that are looking to determine what would best meet the needs of students in our community with regard to this professional advanced learning. And then we also do provide summer externships for teachers, and it's so that other teachers throughout the community can also become more informed about ways to educate students and different ways to provide them with real-life experiences. This represents our 2020-2021 participation group. We have seven-member districts, and those are listed for you there. Logan-Rodgersville, Marshfield, Nixa, Ozark Republic, Springfield, and Stratford. Two associate districts, and so those are districts that have a regional district program, and they might send some students to the primary program. We also have four affiliate districts. And so those are broken out for you to understand. There are different billing strategies for the support that they receive, but those four affiliate districts include Branson. There's a collaborative group that's identified as Lake Region that identifies a number of districts, a Monette Regional Group, and then West Plains. This shows you the revenue and course offerings for the current fiscal year. So revenue allocated at 225 seats for FY21 at $2,250 for the annual tuition or $1,0125 per semester generates $514,250, and that does include some of those affiliate membership fees included within that. The strands that are offered in the current year include those that are listed, two strands for medical and health, one strand for engineering and manufacturing, a business and entrepreneurship strand, and an information technology and technology solutions, as well as a half-strand for teacher education. This shows you the breakdown of the cost for the program. It's not surprising that the majority of the costs are supporting salary and benefits for the staff engaged in that work. Purchase services, I mentioned the contract with the local chamber, and there are some other contracts that support this effort as well. Supplies is very minimal in this type of learning situation. We do collect for our fiscal agent management an administrative fee of 3.5%. That's usually around $20,000 per year. Total expenditure estimate in the current year is $610,296. So as you can see, the revenue intake this year at $515,000 and expenditures at $610,296. This is an anomalous year because as COVID disrupted so many things within our district, it also caused disruption in the other districts as well. And we did have a couple of districts pull out right before school started, which changed the dynamic. Now, we have plenty of fund balance in that account, and so we're easily able to weather that storm. And the cooperating districts do understand that tuition is based on the needs to cover the costs. So our estimated fund balance at June 30 of 2021 this year is $27,774. Then we move forward with the plan for next year. So we have six-member districts that are planning to participate, two associate districts, and four affiliate districts. Again, those are all listed for you in the presentation posted. The revenue calculation, we are making an assumption at this time that the tuition would remain the same, and that will generate $345,500 in tuition. And we've adjusted the strands for an adjustment to the enrollment anticipated. So one strand in medical and health, one in engineering and manufacturing, and then one for entrepreneurship. This shows you the breakdown with the new plan for FY22. Again, most of the costs are associated with salary and benefits at 81.18%. The grand total expenditures for the year is anticipated at $319,025. Now, it comes in under that typically because of our estimated supplies and purchase services. And we will continue to monitor any changes. The agreements with the participating districts is set at such that we should not have any surprises as we move into the new year. So we're hopeful that that will grow back up again and be serving kids much like everything else that we're doing these days. So as you can see, the forecasted revenue and expenditures for the upcoming year indicates $345,700 for revenue and $319,025 for expenditures. The estimated fund balance at June 30 would be $54,449. So that is the end of the budget development for Go CAFS. I'm happy to answer any questions at this point in time since there are four different legs to this presentation tonight.
Any questions or clarification from Carol to this point? Okay, being none, go ahead, Carol.
Very good. So we'll transition into the Health Benefit Trust Fund. And so I know that you are aware that we are self-funded for our health program, for our employees. And with that, we maintain our own account. Again, it's a fiduciary account, so it doesn't belong to the resource of the district in terms of if all of a sudden changes would be made, that we would not have self-funded insurance, that would be a mechanism for distributing the dollars and that. The benefits of being self-insured as compared to fully insured is that we've basically eliminated a poor-profit middle company. And so we are able to offer a rich benefit program at the best possible pricing. And with that, we also have responsibilities and we carry additional insurance. So we absolutely maintain the program under the purview of the law in terms of what we must do for meeting needs of employees and others that are served, their dependents. And then we carry a stop-loss insurance coverage, and I'll cover that in a little more detail. So the revenues, it goes without saying, would be any contribution that the district would make into the fund and also any employee deductions for their dependent coverage. We also do have interest income for this account. Our expenditures include not only those individual health claims but also the assistance that we receive in managing the funds. And again, I'll cover more of that in the upcoming slides. We also have a wellness coordinator, and so the salary benefits for that individual are quoted to the Health Benefit Trust Fund. I have some notes on this slide that talk about the swing in the revenue versus how the expenditures are made, and there's a chart that will follow as well. So this shows you that we, on average, spend in claims just over $2.5 million. We have administrative fees of $194,000, making a total of $2.7 million on average. And so the annual expenditure budget for the Health Benefit Trust Fund is $32,500,000. This shows you information with regard to the stop-loss insurance. And so it's a staggered approach. We have a $350,000 specific deductible, and then we have an aggregating specific deductible as well. And so this is coverage for us so that in the event we have a particular participant, whether it be an employee or their dependent, who would have some sort of catastrophic circumstance in their lives, that they would have, that the district would experience a cap on the costs that would come our way. And so obviously, we would have to pay the costs in excess of $350,000 for each of those claims. But as we continue through the year, our grand total would be capped overall for those costs. This provides you information regarding our partners in this work. Mercy Hospital provides the medical services for our employees and their dependents. We have dental for dental services. And then we have other partners that provide services in managing the work of this self-funded program. The main one would be MedPay. So no employee claims come to the district office. All of that is handled by the third-party provider, MedPay, and they administer the payment of all of those claims. Then Delta Dental does handle the administration for the dental claims. And then we have a pharmacy benefit administrator that deals with all the pharmacy requests of employees and their dependents. We have a benefits broker, and that is JW Terrell. They're now referred to as Marsh and McClellan Agency. And they provide us overall support, including doing bids and that type of thing when it's time to renew our services that we receive from providers. This shows you our current census data, and so what this means is how many lives is SPS insuring in our community? And it's under 6,5,843 lives. Of that number, 3,422 represents active employees. We also have 408 retirees on our plan, and currently we have eight COBRA elections. And that is, of course, the standard offering that anyone who separates from their employment may participate in continuing coverage for a period of time. This shows you our premiums currently, $522 per month for qualifying employee, and dental is $1085 per month. 100% of employee insurance is funded by the district for both the base plan and Health Savings Account High Deductible Health Plan for 2021. It runs on a calendar year, and we do a renewal process with our employees where they may elect their benefit coverage each fall leading up to the January 1 date. So the amount that the district is paying on behalf of an employee for a full year of coverage at this point in time is $6,394.20. And the overall estimate for employer coverage that we budget for within our full budget is $21,889.52 in the current year. This shows you the historical information on our medical premiums. And as you can see, we are showing for 2020, we did increase the employee-only portion, which again is funded by the district, to $493. And then January 1 of 2021, we made another adjustment, and all of that was in an effort to stabilize and sustain financially the plan. We did also make some adjustments to various dependent care coverages. And when we took a look at our information as compared to our regional peers through both the compensation study and our internal work, and that which JW Terrell or Marsh McClellan does, we find that we are offering a very rich plan at a reduced cost as compared to our peers. And so that has definitely continued to be a goal of ours to make recommendations to the board that will provide the best benefit possible for our employees. The 2020 medical plan monthly contribution, this shows the buy-up and dependent care pieces. So we do have three plans now, and that was a new thing, January 1 of 2021. Previously, we just had the one plan available. So we have a buy-up plan that allows employees to basically maintain nearly the identical plan that we had in the past. We also have the base plan that carries a zero out-of-pocket cost for an employee. And again, the High Deductible Health Savings Account Plan carries a zero out-of-pocket cost for employees. And as you can see, these are the variety of rates then that the employee would experience if they had dependent care coverage. So one might wonder, well, how much money should we maintain for a fund balance to support a self-funded program? And there is no legal requirement in this regard, which is quite interesting. We maintain in a general rule perspective that the balance should be equal to two months of claims and three months of administrative costs. And that's a basic standard business practice in checking with other entities with self-funded insurance programs. So based on current-year data, $5.6 million is the desired minimum reserve balance. And overall, as you can well imagine, COVID-19 has had an impact on people being able to obtain medical services, therefore it's reduced costs. And so we've seen some fluctuations in the current year relative to that. This slide shows you on a month-to-month basis how our fund balance has changed. And so as you can see, the gold line represents the current year and the blue line represents FY20. And I mentioned previously that we have some swings in how expenditures and revenue occur. One important thing to share is that we see a spike in the fund balance in the month of June because we pay balance and contract checks to teachers. So teachers have their annual amount divided over 12 paychecks per year, but the first one occurs in September, at the end of September. Then in the month of June, we are generating not only the June check but the July and August checks as well. So that accumulates funds in the Health Benefit Trust Fund, but then the bills catch up later. Okay? So, and that's why you can also see, if you look at a breakdown on the expenditure trajectory, a number of costs occur over the summer because that's when some people have freedom in their calendars to have certain medical procedures performed. So as you can see, on average in FY20, our fund balance was $2,574,079. And this year, the average has been, and this represents July through February, $2,952,231. So we're a bit away from the $5 million mark, but we are seeing progress. And the recommendation that was provided to the Board of Education for effective 2021 was done with thoughtfulness in terms of what is the best rate that we could offer for our employees and their experience and also for the district so that we didn't increase and over-correct too much. So our anticipated revenue for the current year is $33 million. We'll continue to watch that each month to ensure that we are on track for that. Expenditures, $32.5 million. And again, you do see in the month of June that heightened fund balance, but it's because those checks drop in by June 30 and then we start spending the money out. So the estimated balance at June 30 is $6,689,230. So again, we will be providing the final recommendation for our Health Benefit Trust Fund revenue expenditures during the June 8 board meeting. And at that point in time, we'll have more months to review for historical trending. So we do look at this every single month. The business services team and I take a look at the financial documentation. And again, we'll continue to make annual recommendations to set the fund at an appropriate level. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Carol at this time on the Health Benefits Trust Fund?
Carol, I had a question, but I think you already answered it, but I just wanted to make sure. On slide number 23, when we went to the new cost for '21, I believe there was a range. That range is a reflection of the buy-up program. Is that what the range represents?
Okay, so this slide represents, yes, it includes not only the cost for employee-only but also for the dependent care. It's the next slide that shows the out-of-pocket for an employee if they are choosing that dependent care coverage.
So again, on Slide 23, the previous slide, on 2021, when you have the range, the previous years did not have that range. That range represents...
The three different plans. Yes, yes, you're correct. That is correct.
Okay, great. Question? Any other questions before Carol moves forward with the other budget development items? Okay, Carol?
Okay. Now, we will take a closer look at our bond fund and our debt service fund. And again, that's that consistent slide to show you that we have five primary funds indicated, two fiduciary funds. And I should go back and comment about that. We do have five listed here, and I believe on the last presentation, I said four. The reason for that is the state of Missouri does indeed require us to report the four primary funds. And if you look at the annual report to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, within the state, you'll see four funds. And within Fund Four, the capital and the bond funds are combined. When we report to the state, combined. But we manage those as very separate funds here. It provides us clarity on experiences. The bond fund, as you know, is very unique and different, and that way, we're able to keep a close eye on our regular capital as well. So clarification there. So there's our timeline. And so obviously, any fund balance from the prior year would carry forward for the bond fund. And anytime there would be an approved bond issue, those bond sale proceeds would be a primary revenue source. We also have interest income that is placed into that account. We do maintain separate funds and separate bank accounts. I'm providing you this evening some additional context about bonds in general and next steps, potentially, as we consider what would the budget planning look like in the future. This slide shows you the bonding capacity of Springfield Public Schools. And this is per Missouri Constitution. We have a 15% allocation based on assessed valuation. And this calculation shows you that we add into that the state-assessed railroad and utility amount, or an estimate of that. We then attain our gross bonding capacity when applying 15%. To that, we add our debt service checking account balance, and then we subtract out any outstanding debt. So at this point in time, we have the ability to have an additional bond issue of $271,070,277. This slide provides you with the election dates and required pass-in percentages. And the state of Missouri is very unique in that it matters which month and it matters which year. And you can see that sometimes it requires a 57.14% to pass a bond issue. Other times, it may require a 66.23% vote to pass a bond issue. And again, if it's an even year or an odd year, that matters. I've also, this is actually a snap of what the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Office produces, and so that's provided for you there. This is about our Standard and Poor rating, and that is how our bond issues are evaluated. And it sends a message to people who might be willing to loan their money to provide for these bond funds. So people who have significant wealth might decide they want to invest in purchasing school bonds, millions of dollars perhaps. And this provides them with that assurance that we will be repaying our debt. We enjoy a very strong rating, a AA long-term rating, and with Standard and Poor. And again, it's a strong indicator for investors that we have the ability to repay that debt. This slide provides you context for the journey that occurred prior to the 2019 bond approval. And you, some of you were on the board and remember the presentations on Facility Master Plan Assessment Work that took place back in 2016. That led to the April 2017 bond issue. We did receive over 50% support, but we needed 57.14%. The board then held a retreat and talked significantly about facility master planning and how to move forward from that. Then we did hire architectural firms and also formed, the board formed, the Community Task Force on Facilities. And that group met often and long and formed a recommendation to the board that was provided October 16, 2018. Then patrons in the community approved the $168 million bond issue. So the bond issue that was presented and approved for April 2, 2019, did carry an 18-cent levy increase that was brought in over two years, phased in over two years, with a 9 cent and a 9 cent, and provided for primary projects. I have those listed here as the original projects that were planned for Hillcrest High School renovation, Jarrett Middle School new, Boyd Elementary new, Delaware Elementary new, Sunshine Elementary renovation, Williams Elementary was primary renovation with new, and then Ada Fulbright Early Childhood Center new. We also discussed as a committee secure entrances to provide upgrades throughout the district for that work, and that was approved as well. So we issued bond issues. We did it in two phases. And a reason to break out the issuance of the bond issue can, it can be connected to arbitrage, which is the requirement that you spend the bond issue in a certain window of time. It is not our goal to make money on the bond issue, and there are IRS calculations in the event that the interest rates would turn upside down, where people that had invested in the bonds were making less interest than we were making on what was sitting in our bank account. And so there are reasons in that regard that we stay very tight on the schedule and the drawdown of the bond issues. So what we did in this particular situation, on June 4, 2019, the $148 million was sold, and then the remaining $20 million was sold December 2, 2020. So we do provide the board with quarterly updates on the progression of the projects. Travis Shaw provides that information. And we also bring change orders and bids and agreements relative to the bond during each board meeting as is needed. And we very much appreciate the board allowing us to bring for vote during study sessions that work so that we can keep it moving very quickly. Bond financial reports are included within the Treasurers' Report each month, and we have other reports and meetings and structures that take place routinely to monitor and measure progress on our bond issues. So this is just a snapshot of that front page of the Treasurers' Report as a reminder that this is posted each month under the public section for anyone to review. This provides you, you see this often, we developed this out early on, our schedule for the progression of the April 2019 bond work. And we continue to not only remain on track, but we're able to move some projects forward. And so this includes the information that was included in the October 2018 recommendation from the Community Task Force, where they recommended a three-phase approach to addressing the facility needs throughout our district. The 2019 bond issue in their original presentation was $159,760, but they also indicated they wanted us to add funds for secure entrances. And so we did that. And then the 2023 bond issue recommended, it was $124,270. And again, that's based on the work that needed to happen at that time. It would assume no tax increase. And then their recommendation included the third phase being $185,500,000, that would assume a 6-cent levy increase in the future. This shows you, this is actually a slide from the Community Task Force Report, where all of those projects were indicated to move forward, and those are delivered or underway at this time. We do meet with our Community Task Force twice a year and provide them with an update. And we had board representation as part of that group. So Dr. Frederick is nodding to me. And so the second phase, and this is a celebration, so due to the pricing that we've received, the ability to manage the work in a very deliberate manner so that we are not experiencing even more increased inflation, has allowed us to move forward from Phase Two to Phase One. The Hillcrest High School Phase Two project, so the second leg of that renovation, and York Elementary in its entirety, and additionally, then, the four elementary gyms that will serve as safe shelters for the community as well. So again, there's no levy anticipated for that next phase. And now, the amount of it will change, or there may be some other projects that the Community Task Force might determine to prioritize if that is the path that the board prefers to take moving forward. So this represents the project list from the April 2026 issue. You can see a number of renovations and one school purging K-8. The recommendation is that the board make that decision in the future unless there's new data or new information that would indicate otherwise. So we believe that moving forward, the next steps would include collecting data. So what has the price per square foot been for a renovation versus a new construct? What are the variables that we need to anticipate? You know, currently, and I believe Dr. Shaw's referenced that, you know, we're experiencing different pricing levels for certain steel products and that type of thing. Construction's been a little inflated here recently. But just assessing the financial outlook overall, and that would include much of what the Community Task Force experienced in that first session, where we covered how the revenue is generated. We talked about assessed valuation to a high level. Again, those members I've shared with you during Focus Area 3 reports that the membership felt like they had earned an MBA through their work, learning all about school business. So again, I mentioned assessing the impact of renovation versus new construction, and talking about the location strategies. Is there something else that needs to be considered as we look forward for the work? So I mentioned we're continuing to engage, but this would be a full re-engagement, potentially, at the board's discretion. So that was a board-appointed committee, and so we maintained minutes and posted all of that information on our website. It's still there today if anyone's interested in learning more about it. But overall, then, developed that recommendation for how to proceed to provide for kids in our buildings. So that concludes the bond, and I'll pause if you have any questions about this.
I have a really, it's really simple. I'm sure I'm overthinking this. So in the next phase, how do we generate funds without a tax levy? Is that the interest?
So our revenue that's generated is a calculation of assessed valuation multiplied by the existing levy for the debt service account. And with anticipated growth in assessed valuation, with the reduction of costs, there are a variety of factors that would contribute to that. But we, in our district, we do roll back the debt service levy when we make recommendation to the board and maintain just the balance necessary to pay for the debt. So it's a multitude of factors. It's not, it's not a silly question. It's actually a bit complicated when you start looking at it. But we also have our partners from Steeple, used to be George K. Baum, that have experts in financial analysis of all of that data, and they work with us to help guide us on what we can afford moving forward. So, good question.
Any other questions for Carol? Scott?
Okay, double-A rating, which is really good. What's the benchmark for other school districts? Is it double-A or triple-A?
Oh, no. We hold one of the highest ratings for public education, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Any other questions before we move on, on our agenda?
All right.
Okay. All right, well, thank you, Carol.
So debt. Hi. So we're going to lean into debt, and I have this slide...
We're not tired of hearing from you.
No, no, no.
I do not want you to take it that way.
Of course not.
Thank you. One more.
One more time. So this slide talks about that transition from bond to debt. So the voters authorize the bonds by passing a ballot question. Then we sell the bonds. That money goes into the bond fund, and then we write checks out of that account to pay for construction bills. At the same time, we have a debt service levy that is set to ensure that we are adequately covering our principal and interest payments. There's always a small little fee processing as well. And so the debt service levy is what generates the revenue needed. And again, it's based on the assessed valuation, the levy, all of those factors are included. And so that's how we repay the debt over time. So the debt service fund, again, it carries that fund balance carryover from June 30 into July 1. We do have interest earnings. And then there are certain revenues that get direct deposited or distributed in the debt service fund, and some that get distributed by levy. This is our debt schedule, and it shows you each of the series that's outstanding and the principal and interest for each of those. Again, this is a general obligation debt schedule. This is part of what is included in the final budget recommendation and the budget document itself each year. Our interest rates currently range between 1.5% to 5.66%. This shows you how we determine how much each year we need to allocate or recommend budget for, for the debt service fund. I also have highlighted for you that over the next 10 years, we'll see $164.254 million of this total debt repaid. The schedule does not include crossover refunding payments, so you know that there are times when we bring to you an opportunity to refinance or refund a bond issue. And that can only happen twi, well, one time technically, because typically, the notes are 20 years in length, and there's one call period, and that's at the 10-year mark. That is our opportunity to say, hey, interest rates are down compared to my current interest rate. I need to refinance this. And so much like people who would refinance their home loan, we may do that with debt, but again, one time per year. The reason for that is the people that invested in those bonds to begin with, they want assurance that I'm going to know that I'll make that much interest for at least a 10-year span. So that's the reason for limited call provisions. So our current-year budget has a revenue budget of $41,132,767, expenditure budget of $42,940,861. And again, that is set and fluctuates based on anticipated payments to be made for principal and interest. We do have a crossover refunding that's outstanding right now, and so we have a special escrow requirement of those funds. So there is a window of time during which, while the 10-year call is coming up within a certain number of months, we can do a crossover refunding. And that money sits in an account until that 10-year time period happens. So we're ready to go. So the revenue and expenditures for next year will be provided during the June 8 budget recommendation presentation. So any clarification or feedback on this?
Any questions for Carol at this time? Okay, all right. Thank you, Carol.
Certainly.
We'll move on to our next agenda item, which is 8.01, which is our bond project updates in action, our change orders and agreements. Carol?
Yes, so Dr. Shaw prepared this information for you this evening, and I'll just highlight a few things. So again, we list out by school site or by primary project, the items for change order consideration. And this evening, I'll highlight for you, obviously, a number of items are connected with Boyd. We have a few things for Fulbright and Hillcrest, Jarrett. The Package Four represents on all of those interior windows. That is in connection with the secure entrances and is relative to ensuring that there's an appropriate line of sight for the staff within the building. So as you know, part of the delivery of projects the past year included those secure entrances for our buildings that were not going to be impacted by the bond issue. Do you have any questions? I'll do my best to answer those.
Any questions for Carol? And this is our vote, or votes tonight to keep our bond projects moving in a timely manner. So any questions for Carol before I read the recommended action?
This is a learning opportunity for me. So these, assuming none of this was completely correct.
Correct. Right. So our process is that this comes forward for approval, and then I will, after you approve it, I will sign the information, and it will be routed back to the individuals to effect the change in the work.
Good questions, Scott. Any other questions for Carol before we move forward? The recommended action is that the board approves the change orders and agreements as presented. And our board docs is not working. I got a note from Kathy, so I'm going to call a roll call vote. Denise?
Do you need a motion?
I read, I read it.
Did you get it?
Oh, I am so sorry.
So I will make the motion.
I am so sorry. I was so focused on telling you that our computers are not working, or the board docs is not working. Let me start over. The recommended action is that the board approves the change orders and agreements as presented. Denise would like to make that motion. Is there a second? Sharita will second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Denise?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Charles?
Aye.
Sharita?
Chair votes aye.
Motion passes. Our next agenda item is public comments to address non-agenda items, and we do have several speakers signed up. several speakers signed up. I'll read our notes for this segment. The Board of Education will allow comments on topics not related to the printed agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes for each speaker and will be timed by the board secretary. It is inappropriate to address the board about individual students or individual staff members by name in open meeting. If you have concerns about individuals, these concerns should be addressed to the appropriate administrative supervisors either in the schools or in the district office. The board uses this time in our meeting to listen to comments and our concerns from the public, but will not comment or engage with the public during this meeting. If you have materials you would like to share, please provide them to our board secretary prior to speaking, and she will distribute them to the board members. Our first speaker is Arthur, Arthur Hodge. Good evening.
Good evening. I will not tear very long. Don't forget pleasant view, please. Why do we wet this up? I'm supposed to function on this? Good evening.
Good evening.
I wish to congratulate all the gatekeepers. Welcome. You have a difficult job ahead of you, and I pray you're up to the task. Thanks for your commitment. I just have a few things this evening. First, I'm a God-fearing man. I'm a veteran, and I'm a patriot. I'm concerned about the future of this great country. Schools are not a panacea for all the ills that plague society. It is just one component. Others must step up to the plate, especially the church. Parents must become more involved in the education of their children. People must not live in fear, but step up and speak out. We as a country is in dire straits. There are two things I would like to share. You have a handout for one of those, these concerns. First, I feel there's a need to revisit the school time changes for next school year. Teachers' parents should have a say since it will affect them the most. Was this well thought out? Did those in the decision-making department really give some thought to the whole idea and concept? This will turn things upside down. Will make it a difficult undertaking for many. The last but not least is the discipline policy. The scope and sequence needs to be revised. Students are getting too many chances for their behavior, and it's being abused. Need to be given less chances for their infractions. Administrators and teachers should have, should be given more latitude in correcting behavior. Thank you so very much for your attention. God keep you and bless you in this great endeavor. I wish all of you the best. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next agenda speaker is, I'm sorry, our next public speaker is Teresa Druza. Good evening, Teresa.
And a veteran. I have some additional information about the perks of being a wallflower. I had a discussion with my grandson and got some additional information. The book is in the curriculum, because if it wasn't in the curriculum, why would I have to fill out a form to take it out of the curriculum? He said the book was chosen for them. They did not have a choice. No permission letter, went home to parents for the, for the book, only for the movie. The book was read to them out loud in class. Someone wanted all those students to make sure the students heard every filthy word of that pornography. I was told that this book was not the business of the school board, but according to Missouri statute 170.051 regarding school board responsibilities for books, it is your responsibility. And delegating your responsibility does not eliminate your being responsible for pornography in the curriculum. What is not your responsibility is pushing Marxism and alternate lifestyles onto our children. I'm afraid the district has activists who use their positions to further their activist causes. And you do not have the right or permission from the parents to push Marxism and alternate lifestyles onto our children. Critical race theory has its roots in Marxism. There are BLM stickers up in the school. I do not have a problem with this, except for the fact that there's no, no alternative. The other side of the argument is not allowed. For example, there would never be allowed a sticker saying all lives matter. The co-founder of BLM is a self-admitted trained Marxist. She trained under Eric Mann and, who was in the Weather Underground. Their ultimate goal is the destruction of US imperialism and the achievement of a classless world, world communism. Marxism is a political, a set of political and economic ideas. Therefore, I was told no politics in the school. So why are they allowed to have up sticker, stickers? And it sounds to me like fascism and a violation of the First Amendment.
Thank you, Teresa. Our next public speaker is Mary Byrne. Good evening, Mary.
Good evening. Following up on Ms. Druza, I'd like to point out this is the handout distributed to the teachers during professional development. It is called an oppression matrix. And the privileged social group in the right column of the matrix reads like this, that identifying adult white, gender-conforming, heterosexual, able-bodied Protestants as privileged social group, and I'd like to discuss those descriptors in alignment with an excerpt from Karl Marx's 1884 essay, A Contribution to the Critique of Hegel's Philosophy of Right. That essay reads as such, "For the revolution of a nation and the emancipation of a particular class of civil society to coincide, for one state to be acknowledged as the estate of the whole society, all the defects of society must conversely be concentrated in another class." In other words, pick a scapegoat. A particular estate must be the estate of general stumbling block, the incorporation of the general limitation. A particular social sphere must be recognized as the notorious crime of the whole society," which is what that column is in an oppression matrix. "For one estate to be par excellence, the estate of liberation, another estate must conversely be the obvious estate of oppression," hence the oppression matrix. This is offensive. It's offensive to me as a taxpayer that my money went to a professional development of teachers, and they were forced to find themselves on this matrix and admit that they were racist. This content also aligns with Bill Ayers' book Prairie Fire, which is based on the belief that the duty of a revolutionary is to make revolution. He goes on to say that it was the Communist Party, USA, that was the main force of the organized left in the United States between the Depression years and World War II. The Communist Party stressed the special importance of black liberation, communist and persistent battles against white chauvinism and white supremacy. Marx's Communist Manifesto reads, "The communists have not invented the intervention of society and education, but they do seek to alter the character of that intervention." In conclusion, the alignment of the Springfield Public School professional development content with Marxist ideas and communist ideology is inconsistent with the messaging of SPS' diversity training that is designed to foster inclusive environment for students. Rather, it's designed to impose Marxism on the adults who are then encouraged to incorporate Marxist-aligned Black Lives Matter content in the K-12 classroom. The misalignment between messaging and reality is not lost on the public.
Thank you, Mary. Our next public speaker is Pat Scott.
Thank you. Congratulations, board members. Let me get back to it. The last meeting that I attended, we heard this report on the curriculum. And as I understand the way this organization would work, I said, we should have an answer who selected that curriculum and fix it. And I would think as the board sitting here today, I would go to the superintendent, and he would go back, or she will go back, and find out what's going on, how these decisions are made. And I'd have an answer in a week or 10 days. Because as I understand it, that is the board's responsibility, that the superintendent would carry out your wishes, and you're hearing the wishes of the public. Two things that I would like to see happen. The intimidation, we have wonderful teachers and administrators, but the intimidation that goes on in Springfield is there, and it's real. And to prove that, we were without a principal at Central High School for two years. We go to Arkansas, a little town of 10,000, and hire someone with very little experience. When we have wonderful teachers and administrators in Springfield, why are people not willing to stand up and take these jobs? They're leaving as soon as they can get the retirement. That's number one. Fix the intimidation. I don't believe the results of the studies that I've heard in here from the HR department, that there's 97% approval rating for their jobs in their school. I'm sorry, I'm out there. I don't believe it. I'd like to see that fixed. Number two, we couldn't wait to get all of the technology in our kids' hands. They've got Dream Books, they've got Reading Plus, they've got Lexia. We couldn't wait to get it in kindergarten, first, second, and third grade, and you see the results in our test scores and what's happening to your kids in school. How easy would it be? Take those, I don't know when that curriculum has been updated for Lexia and Dream Box and these kids that can't hold a pen or write their name or use a pair of scissors. Take it out of kindergarten, first, second, and third grade. They don't have to have a Chromebook in their hands. They're going to have something when they get home. Go back to some skills that we know have been tested. I heard some of the, this innovative thing, I think we've had enough innovative under this administration. I'd like to see it stop, whether it's open classrooms, technology, it's time to take a look. Try that. It's not going to cost anything. Get it out of the lower grades. In third grade, they can take an hour of, of a course if they need it. I can't believe I've got 15 seconds left. I, I, I don't, I don't want to be rude to anybody. It's all a thankless job, it's going to be. But these administrators here have to carry out your wishes, the public's wishes, and they go back and find out what's going on and report it to you.
Thank you, Pat. Our next public speaker is Carl Heard. Carl Heard. Good evening, Carl.
Greetings. That's my impression of a prominent politician. I wonder if you would dare think who it might be? I'll give you hints as I go along. But really, what that's all about is I wanted to demonstrate a technique of teaching. Now, the mind can only absorb what the ink can endure. You've had a long meeting tonight already, and it's just getting started, it seems. So anyway, moving on. Welcome to the three newly elected board members. Congratulations on winning. I expect this board to give clear expectations to the new superintendent. That is your job. Sorry. Dr. Latham will have a one-time opportunity to turn this district around. Ten years ago, our 12 had 3,000 employees. Today, our 12 has 4,000 employees. Take my math, that's a 33 and 1/3% increase. Student enrollment has stayed around 25,000 for the last more than 10 years. But the tragedy is test scores have gone down. Consider this for your new superintendent. She should require every employee, teacher, administrator, bus driver, cook, justify their need to be employed. Positions where the employee never sees a student during the day would be high priority to be challenged where that job is needed. The only reason for an administrative job to exist is to assist and support student achievement. That's the only justification. One final point. Have you or your spouse, significant other, had a fight? And you do the silent treatment to them? Have you received the silent treatment? How did you like it? So every board meeting that has public speakers, and you give them the silent treatment, what have you gained? Let me circle back, hint, hint, to the beginning of my talk. Teachers are actors, and the world is their stage.
Thank you, Carl.
Can I suggest a new slogan? Let's make teaching fun again. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Our next public speaker is Sarah Keener.
Hey, everybody. Thanks for letting me talk tonight. I come today with truth and love, sharing my story. Last month, my fourth grader, Pam Hum, confused and upset, she shared with me that she felt her teacher had read an inappropriate book to her, In Our Mother's House by Patricia Palaco. She stated that she didn't know why her teacher would read a book that goes against the values that she's been taught at home. Sad and I come to you today understanding that the respect and the relationship of parent involvement in education decisions at SPS has been removed. An example, before the fourth grade health unit puberty video is shown, the school demonstrates respect of parental rights by sending home a letter of notice. SPS respects that conversation because they understand this isn't a school's job, but a parent's job to have this conversation. Opting out or having a conversation at home prior to that unit's video is still a choice. But opting out of a book that normalizes lifestyle choices that might be contradictory to some family's values isn't an option. My freedom as a parent has been taken away. When SPS decides, when did SPS decide they needed to be a parent and instill their cultural values versus an educational institution, sticking to the basics of education? After much conversation with SPS, I can clearly see the goal of this, the school's curriculum, which is to include children of all backgrounds and diversity. Children can't choose their life situations, and it is our job as humanity to make sure all children feel loved and included. I believe the answer is to not read books that impose cultural agendas, therefore removing parental rights, and stealing children's rights to innocence. My daughter's 10 years old and was read that book. SPS, in an attempt to be inclusive, decided to instill their values upon my child instead of sticking to the basics of just education. And so no matter what beliefs everyone has here in this room, I come to you with truth and love to share that it is our right as parents to instill those values at home, and the school has zero right to have these conversations with our kids. I'm here to be a voice of truth and love and be a part of the solution, so I'm proposing three things. I'm asking SPS to change by encouraging and welcoming parent involvement back into education decisions, especially curriculum. No parent needs to be left unaware like I was. I want to make, help, I want SPS to make curriculum and literature tools that plan on being used public and accessible to all parents. Be transparent with parents, please. Respect parental rights to instill their individual values in the home, and SPS stick to what it is, an educational institution, teaching the basics of math, English, et cetera. Respect parental rights. Thank you, SPS board, for listening.
Thank you, Sarah. Our, our last public speaker is Dan Rize. Our, our last public speaker is Dan Rize.
Guys.
Guys, sorry.
I'll jump in for you.
I'm sorry, guys. Thank you, welcome.
A long burden to bear.
Welcome, Dan.
Thank you for your time. Well, as I came here today, I had some thoughts, and I wasn't exactly sure how those were going to all crystallize, until some other speakers helped me kind of crystallize some of those. Funny that we've had, I think, three mentions of wanting parents here. Well, you have parents here tonight, directly with the board, so yay for that, I guess. And I had this thought, some, some things have been going through my head previously to tonight, and one of them was, I listened to a great documentary on Martin Luther King. A little-known fact about the most famous speech he ever gave, that we all know him for, was that his line, that line, the speech, was not in that speech that he wrote down. From the time he was a teenager and he began preaching, he wrote every sermon, every thing that he did, he wrote it out, and then he memorized it word for word. And obviously, he grew, and people had to go to bigger and bigger venues, and then that moment happened. And there was the choir director, singer, whomever she was, offstage, and he only had eight minutes on live television, even King, you know? Only eight minutes, everybody only got eight minutes. And she said, "Tell them about the dream." And so that line, and what we all come to know and think about, you know, that we want all of us, our children, to be judged by our character, content of our character, you know? He was talking about black and white, but, you know, let's say it's everybody, we want to see hand in hand down the street with, with everybody, you know, anyone. Well, it made me think about my friend growing up, in eighth grade music class, Mr. Smith. And my friend Ben Abibi, that was the first class we had together, women, grew up together, but it was the first period, we did the Pledge of Allegiance. And Ben didn't stand, and the teacher asked him about it and said, "Why aren't you standing?" He goes, "Well, we don't believe in that God." Well, that's strange, but, nobody, okay, everybody moved on. This was a long time ago, you know, in St. Charles, Illinois. And, you know, if that was prayer, if that was the, the teacher, instead of leading the Pledge of Allegiance, leading prayer, of course, that would be a problem, right? We've moved past that. Because we don't want to state, you know, requirement where you have to be there as a kid, so you have to be there for prayer. So we've taken that out, and rightfully so. And as other people have alluded to, you can't have it both ways. You can't have your morality put in place, can't have your views on life, on politics, and everything else. What if your kid came home and wanted to vote for the person that you hated? Or wanted to live an entirely different lifestyle because they learned it at school, instead of learning how to do algebra? Or whatever the next class of the next day should be, hopefully. So I'm here to echo some of these words that have already been said, and just want to say thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Dan. And we will move forward with our next agenda item, which is strategic updates. The first one is Focus Area 1, Goal 2 mid-year update, which will bring our Deputy Superintendent, Dr. Holt, up to the podium. Do you have any commentary to present this, or will move forward, will, will move forward to be efficient?
No. No, personally.
That's right.
It's been a long, it's been a long night.
That's right. Just as a reminder to our new board members, and that are onboarding, our strategic plan will be presented, jot down some notes as they're presenting, and then we'll take questions, and Dr. Holt and her team will fill those at the conclusion of their presentation. So, Dr. Holt, you ready to get us started?
I'm ready.
Okay.
Hi, everybody take a deep breath, right? Sorry, it's been a long meeting, but we're excited to be updating you on some of our Focus Area reports. So what you'll hear tonight is Focus Area 1, Goal 2, and we'll be providing you the mid-year report for that. So we'll do it this way. So just as a reminder, and welcome, new board members, by the way, nice to have you at our table. So we have five focus areas to our strategic plan, and both presentations that you will hear tonight are involved in the band of Focus Area 1, which deals specifically with student success and learning support. So as you think about that, we will be diving into Goal 2, and there will be a slew of presenters joining me tonight. But you can see Goal 2 is described as equitable access to engaging relevant and personalized learning experiences that have to do with academic achievement and personal growth. So you will hear tonight about facets of the work that have to do with before and after school programming, that have to do with early childhood, that have to do with the use of modern learning tools and strategies. We'll talk a little bit tonight about core academic data, as well as interventions that we're providing for students that are under-resourced and underrepresented. So I will first invite up to the podium, Dr., excuse me, Mr. Josh Scott, who will be coming to share our extracurriculars.
Welcome. Good evening. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Josh Scott, I'm the District Athletic Director, this is my third year, and very excited to get to present with you all. I'd like to start off with just kind of 1.2, 2.5 with extracurricular activities. We know for a fact with through data that students that are engaged in something extracurricular-wise, either before, after school, have a better or greater sense of belonging to the school, which equates to better attendance, better grades, less discipline. So that is what this is about. We're trying to figure out, how can we get more of our students engaged in something either before or after school, and sometimes during lunch, for, for creating that sense of belonging? Very, very excited to stand here, a year after the pandemic started, and I can celebrate that we were able to offer every activity that we had, athletics and extracurricular activity. It's absolutely amazing that we were able to do it. As we went home last March 13th and canceled spring sports, you really saw the importance of sports and activities on students' lives. And you didn't have to just look at students, you look at parents also, and how it impacted them, looking at their senior son or daughter and say, "I'm sorry, you couldn't play tennis, golf, or you couldn't run on the track team or play soccer." So we are thrilled to have that celebration. Even though we were able to offer all 21 of our different activities, our participation numbers did decrease. Whether that be parents that did not want to enroll their son or their daughter in our activities due to primarily COVID, we were able to have still 25% of our kids first quarter active and engaged in something, and second quarter was 32%. I believe if we were to do this again at the end of this year, our spring would be even higher, as people felt more comfortable and were coming back to five days in-person learning. Parents are just more comfortable, and students were more comfortable coming back to our activities. Virtual competitions were held in place of traditional competitions and debates, Scholar Bowl, DECA, FBLA, SCC LA, and Future Farmers. And, you know, site action plans were implemented. One thing that we really did is we were able to continually review what we were offering and how we were offering it, to attempt to find more creative ways for our students and our coaches. We did have several highlights, several celebrations that I would like to mention tonight. Our Glendale Boys Swim Team won their second state championship in a row. Catherine Dutton from Central Wrestling, very, very excited, she is the first young lady in the history of Springfield Public Schools to win a state wrestling championship. That was just created as a separate sport, girls wrestling. We are in one class, so the first ever, and we were able to see her compete and do that this year. Our Glendale Boys Soccer made it to the Final Four. One noted difference, you will see some of these, I would just say Final Four, that is different because due to COVID restrictions and sites, third-place games were not played in several, several sports this fall. Our Kickapoo Girls Softball Team, and that is another first, it is the first Springfield team to make it to the Final Four in team softball, so it was a great celebration. Even throughout this, and the, the fairgrounds worked wonderfully for archery, we were able to qualify 105 archers to the state tournament. And then the winter culminated with a really, really fun couple days with Kickapoo Boys and Girls competing in the Final Four. And in the winter, with the great partnership Misha and JQH Missouri State has, we were able to have third-place games. So it was really nice for our Kickapoo Girls to be able to compete and win that third-place game. You used to say only two teams leave with a win, well, now we can say two, you know, two teams, not just one, ends up on a high note. So the Girls finished third, and our Kickapoo Boys Team, who was ranked number one in the state throughout most of the year, was able to conclude the season and finish as state champions. And I would just like to note again, that team, because it's one thing to win a state championship, it is another type of pressure when you are expected to win the state championship and you do it. So we're really proud of those boys and that team. So that concludes my report. I want to again thank you for this opportunity, and thank you for your reliance and understanding of how important extracurricular activities are.
Thank you, Josh.
It's good to be with you. For those that are new, I'm Dr. Anderson, I'm the Executive Director of Elementary Learning. Glad to be with you tonight, as we talk about some of our learning opportunities here. So I'm going to share a couple of highlights, both on the, on the K-12 perspective and jump into the elementary, and then Dr. Litter will follow me. So we want to highlight the Academic Success and Graduate Outcomes Report Card. We have had a report card to go out to our sites for leadership, so that they understand the climate and culture, as well as how our students are doing achievement-wise. And that was our first year doing that a couple of years ago, and it was time for a tweak, an update. And we appreciate those that became involved, helped give us the most current information for our leaders, so that we can really help and focus in on our students that need the most help and identify them. We appreciate of our partnership with the Learning Support and the AAA Department, who bond those report cards for climate and culture, as well as academics, that they meet with our leaders regularly to give them some guidance, how to use the data, how to really reach those people that we're serving. So we're grateful for the, those are the highlights, and look forward to applying them in a non-pandemic year coming up. So I'm going to jump into the elementary academics. And for those that are new to our board, so you have an understanding of the numbers, we have about 10,700 students on the K-5 elementary side of things, and we have all the demographics in there, and so I'll be happy to provide that information as requested. And as we get into our elementary academics, what we'll be sharing here is how we did the middle of this year compared to the middle of last year. And so with that comes the connotation that last year, we had a full semester of learning, and then followed by another quarter of learning, before we went into the fourth quarter learning at home with our SPS at Home program. And then when we started this year, we started with two days, we moved to four days for our elementary students in November, and then we switched to five days after spring break. And the reason why that's important is because when it comes to having our seated students in front of us, our K through 2 students had about 44 days of seated instruction during that time, our 3 through 5 students had 42 days of instruction before they took the middle-of-the-year assessment for, of this past middle of the year. And so when we do look at that, I want to train your eye to this middle-of-the-year comparison as far as iReady. iReady is our district's online assessment that helps our schools and educators provide all students a pathway to success, a pathway to proficiency. And so if you look at the all, 32% of our students, of all of our students, as far as the iReady tests them for grades 3 through 5 for math, were on track to be proficient by the end of the year. Now I'll train your eye to the reds and the greens. The red means we went in a different, we went in the opposite direction compared to that of last year. So it's comparing 3rd through 5th graders the year before, middle of the year, to 3rd through 5th graders, middle of the year, this current year. So you can see that we had nearly an 8% drop in our math, as measured by the iReady, from middle of the year, last year, to middle of the year this year. That's certainly not the direction that we wanted to go, but we weren't surprised because of the pandemic and the lack of seated instructional time that we had with our students. And this tells us a number of things. See, that our teachers make a big difference, and we're so grateful for our educators and the difference they do make. And I am very grateful, that I think this could have been worse. I think our teachers did a fantastic job of mitigating the pandemic learning. And we saw some changes, and we continue to see improvements of our students daily now that we are back to five-day. So as we look at this, we can tell that, I shared the all students, our largest gaps, as you can see, were our Hispanic students and our full-pay students. And then the least gaps, the least decrease in the gaps, was with our IEP, IEP students and our EL students. And so we were pleased that while we didn't go in the right direction, that those, the most needs with, with those particular learning supports in need were the least impacted as far as math goes. We also compare gaps, and so on the right-hand side, you can see that what we're shooting for in all areas is green. And we have a couple of indications of that. Our free versus full pay, that gap closed. And look at the drop between our English learners and our non-EL students, we closed that gap by 6%. Of course, we are not pleased with our black versus white gap, or our Hispanic versus white gap in the area of math. For your awareness, we had 5,596 students enrolled at the time of this assessment in the middle of the year, 5,535 of them completed, which is a 99% rate. So really a significant number there. I'll shift gears to reading, and when we look at our iReady reading scores, we see that, again, it didn't go in the direction we wanted it to, but it wasn't as severe as mathematics. And so, again, the same trend is there. Our Hispanic and our full-pay students, subgroups, were our highest gap increases or decreases compared to last year. And then we saw favorable outcomes with our students that have IEPs, as well as our English language learners. And so we are grateful that we made that impact with them. When we look at the gaps, again, it follows the very same trend. Our free versus full, and our EL versus non-EL students, were going in the right direction. And our black versus white, and our Hispanic versus white students, again, the gap there in reading is going in the direction that is not favorable, and we're going to continue to work and narrow that. So this was the outcome of some of the things that we know that influenced our, were influenced by the pandemic. So here's our next steps. We are really working to reverse and mitigate the impact of the pandemic on learning. And we are seeing a difference immediately by this return to five days, and we appreciate that. We are encouraging, we are pleading, we are reaching out to our families to say, "Please come join in our reindeer games for explore sessions," so that we can get your kid back in seats and in learning for their summer, and make learning fun and enjoyable for them. And we also have made strides with our dyslexia instruction. Mind Play is now provided in grades, in students with grades, in grades 2 through 4 for their support. So with the adoption of a math curriculum, we are pleased that we're going to be moving forward with one math versus four different maths that were happening at the elementary. And that was by no fault, because a couple of the math that we were using, one was our standard, one, two of them were the ones that we were piloting, and then we know that those math, those math series didn't work out the best when we had to go to virtual instruction. And so we had to throw Xern in there for support of Xern, because that was better used when we went to virtual learning. And so going from four to one, we think is going to make a big difference, and we're excited for the opportunity. The training on our math curriculum is already started, and we are excited from the feedback that we are hearing from teachers. Teachers are giving us some great feedback, and they see some positive things coming our way. So when it comes to our elementary virtual students and attendants, we know that parents had a choice. They could learn seated, or their students could learn virtual. And when we started the year, we knew that some students maybe went virtual, that would have been better off learning seated. And so as this has gone along, we worked with Dr. Lemon and the virtual side of things and set the standard that if our elementary students were participating or engaging in success rates of less than 70%, we were going to invite those students to come back to seated, because we believe that was a better placement. And so we are pleased that that has brought a number of our students back. And you can see with that, some of those numbers here, at the time of this report, 842 students returned to seated instruction, which is over 8% of our students came back from virtual to seated. However, there are, at this time, almost 1,400 students that continue to learn through launch, and update on that, we are... Launch, and update on that, we are, which was about 13.6%, we are at 11.5% students that continue to continue, learn virtually at this time. And with that, I will pass on the tongue to Dr. Woodard, who will talk about middle school and high school next time.
Thanks, Jay. Good evening.
Hey, good evening. All right, good evening, board members, how you all doing?
Good.
All right. So first off, we'd be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to salute our new board members, welcome to the board, and we applaud your commitment to public education by serving on this board, and we thank you. Tonight, I want to give you kind of a 30,000-foot overview of academics at the middle and high school level, and so this information represents student progress up to the midpoint of the school year, so I'll just dive in. First things first, you see two graphs, the graph on the left kind of represents where we are with mathematics in grades across grades six through eight. This graph demonstrates that we had some decreases that were noted across several subgroups on our middle-year I Ready assessments. These assessments were taken back in January. You will note there was a slight improvement for our IEP students, these are our students with disabilities across grades six through eight. It's also important to note that our African-American students showed progress with a 4.52 increase in comparison, in comparison to the previous school year as well. With regards to the graph, the graph on the right side, this is our gap analysis, and the purpose of the gap analysis is to ensure that all students, all subgroups are kind of achieving at the same rates. And so here, we compare four different groups, it's free versus full, black versus white, Hispanic versus white, and our ELL versus our non-ELL category students. Here we saw, had two areas where we showed positive gains, we showed positive gains with our black versus white category, and we also showed some positive gains with our free versus full price meal category students at 2.6% as well. With regard to these I Ready assessments, we had a 97% participation rate for the reading and a 95% participation rate for the math as well. So next I'll show you what the math slide. Sorry. Hope we don't have any course failure, and then we'll go to math. So this is a graph that shows, one second here, sorry. Did I miss? Yeah, I'm sorry, that's a double click. Reading, sorry. I think we had math first and reading, sorry. There we are, reading. There we are. This graph shows what we look like in reading, middle year, in comparison to the middle of year last year for all sixth through eighth grade students. You can see that there was about a 1.64% difference comparing FY21 to the previous school year, so ultimately not bad, not where we want to be, but not bad, given the fact that we were in the midst of a pandemic, this global crisis, to be only 1% away from where we were the previous year when we were not in a pandemic, really isn't too bad. Again, not where we want to be, but again, we feel like the interventions that we're doing are moving in the right direction. With regard to the data, we saw a little bit of an increase for our African-American students, there was a 0.89% improvement in grades six through eight for African-American students. With regard to our gap closure, you'll see some green there, which is good, what you want to see. There was a notable gap closure with our African-American versus white category students at 2.4%. There was a good gap closure there between our free versus full price meal category at 2.8%, and then a slight increase with our Hispanic versus white students at 0.6%. And so we showed some good movement there. On the next slide, we'll look at our middle school course failure rates across grades six through eight. Unfortunately, we did see some significantly higher failure rates across all grade levels six through eight, about 10% higher, and again, we do believe that was due to the pandemic. We had several virtual students who struggled to keep up with the rigor of balancing a full load of online classes. We also had many students who were working at their own pace, who struggled to meet these deadlines and get things turned in on time, as they should have, and it's stay up to date with assignments, whether they were seated or virtual. Also, low test grades, low quizzes and things like that also led to some of the failure rates that we saw. So the key thing is, is what are we doing to mitigate these, this low performance? And so to mitigate this low performance, we are doing several things. Partnering with our building leaders to provide a number of targeted academic interventions for students to make sure that they're being successful, and providing learning recovery opportunities in our schools, which look like this follows, we provided tutoring just about every day that was in-person and online. Students had the opportunity to attend tutoring both in, during the school day, or they could come after school. We also made thousands, folks with a T, thousands of parent phone calls to let parents know what the academic progress was looking like for their children. We also sent home thousands of letters to parents about academic progress, make-up assignments, flexibility to accept late work for full credit, Wednesday Zoom learning sessions to assist students who were struggling as well. So several interventions were employed to ensure that our students were being successful. With regard to our third quarter failure rates across grades six through eight, you'll see here that we saw some pretty good improvement, which means that the interventions that we were employing are actually working, so there was a reduction in failure for about 5.4%, which is pretty good, so pretty good reduction there. During that time, we also made the transition back to four days of in-person learning for grades K-8, and that transition occurred back in November. And we believe that the addition of more in-person learning time was a contributing factor to kids are performing a little bit better. We also want you to know, board, that we're getting smarter as an organization, you know, there is no manual for how to educate kids during a pandemic, and so we learn from our mistakes, and we're learning what to do, and here's a couple of things that we learned along the way. One, we learned that providing more time on task will be critical for our most underserved, under-resourced population, for those who struggle. And so we were doing that by restructuring our intervention times to support students. We found that during this pandemic, a lot of kids did not want to come and learn after school, and we also found it to be a burden for some of the parents. So restructuring the school day was the best way to reach kids who were struggling, and we did some of that. We also found out that personal touch matters. During this difficult time, kids and parents wanted to know that we cared, and that we were able to connect with them personally, and so we did a lot of that. So our leaders were using their Wednesdays to offer up support, to offer mental health support, to call kids, reach out to kids, encourage students, and to ensure that they were doing the right things and completing assignments, to make sure they were staying on track as well. Also, in addition to that, we used our Tuesday DNF reports, every Tuesday, we run reports that show the progress of kids, and so on those Tuesdays, every week, our leaders would analyze these reports, and then they would form those reports out to their staff members, and so once teachers would see these reports, their job was to analyze these reports, go over these in their POC meetings weekly, and then think about strategies to reteach and further provide, and to provide further interventions. We also added a grace period, late and missing assignments were accepted up until the end of the quarter, and we gave students full credit for it as well. So we wanted to show kids that we're with you in this struggle, and that we want to help you be successful. Failure notices were also sent to parents of students who were failing three or more courses, and this was significant, and we made an adjustment here. So students who were failing three or more online courses, their parents would receive a letter, we were calling home, and then we mandated these students to return back to the seated environment because they were failing in the virtual environment, and that was a strategy that helped also. In addition to that, our Wednesday intervention efforts included Zoom sessions with teachers, again, to provide that personal touch and one-on-one contact, also, we were reaching out to students, again, to provide that mental health support, and help students who were failing to engage online, or whether they were seated, to complete missing assignments as well. So that's just a little bit of what we were doing across grades six through eight. With regard to high school, this will give you an idea what failure rates look like across our high schools. Overall, in comparison to the previous school year, you'll see a difference of about 7.1%. Again, not great, but again, we are trying to educate kids during a very difficult time, so this graph represents the percentage of students who were failing at least one or more of their courses across grades nine through 12, and so we saw that this was trending a little higher than normal. Again, we're not pleased with this, but we do attribute much of this to the effect of learning loss and not having the same amount of instruction time seated that they previously had prior to COVID. Virtual failures are also included in these numbers as well. It is important to note that although these failures did increase, students that are in high school still can graduate on time, that's the most important thing. Though we have some kids who are not doing well, does not necessarily mean that these kids will not graduate, you still have the opportunity to graduate on time. Additionally, our high school students had access to a myriad of interventions that we provided, which included access to credit recovery, it also included a program that we call Incentivize, it also included tutoring, whether in-person or online, and that occurred mostly during the school day, but we did offer it after school as well, and also our Wednesday Zoom learning sessions to assist students who were struggling to master content. With regard to third quarter progress, you'll see that at our high school level, we had some difficulty, of course, just sometimes getting kids to engage, and so that third quarter failure rate was up about 3% in comparison to the previous year. So not pleased with that, but again, during third quarter, and of course, grades nine through 12, we moved from the hybrid model to four days of in-person learning. About roughly 22% of our students opted to remain as virtual students during this time and this transition, and so again, in an effort to mitigate failure, we took several methods, both for the learning, for the in-person and virtual learning modalities, and those were, again, Tuesday DF reports, and again, those reports were critical to the success of our schools by making sure that teachers had the information they needed to find out which kids were not doing well weekly, and again, they analyzed those reports in their POC time. We also accepted those late and missing assignments up until the end of the grading period, sent home failure notices, moved kids back from virtual to seated. In addition to that, we also made home visits, quite a few home visits were made to check on kids. And so when we talk about going the extra mile, our leaders were doing this, they're making home visits. Some of our attendance advisors and principals were making home visits to check on kids and to make sure they were being successful. In addition to that, we also had our Wednesday intervention efforts, which consisted of our Wednesday Zoom sessions and in-person contact, phone calls, et cetera, to ensure that students were making up lost ground if they were falling behind. Essentially, we were tasked by our superintendent to ensure that we imposed every measure to make sure the kids were being successful, and at some point, we feel that once we remove all the barriers, it is now up to the student to do their part. And so that's what we did, that was our assignment. So the next slide will show middle-year credit deficiencies across grades nine through 12. So with regard to credit deficiencies, there were several areas of improvement that we're very proud of. Across grades nine through 12, you note that there's a slight increase of about 0.54% overall, which means that we are moving in the right direction, with regard to reducing the number of kids who are deficient on their credits. Positive improvements were noted for our white students, African-American students, and also in our students who were in the non-EL category as well, showed some slight improvement. With regards to the graph on the right, which is the gap closure graph, you'll see that we had some positive movement with our free versus full category students, and with our black versus white students in comparison to the previous school year as well. So this slide is about next steps, what do we do next? So with regard to next steps for our schools, we're going to continue offering those second chance learning opportunities for all of our students to make sure that they're being successful, and again, that comes with tutoring and all the other interventions that we're offering. We're still monitoring, monitoring kids who are failing three or more classes, who are still online learners, to ensure that they move back to seated environment if they're not being successful in the online environment. We're also having bi-weekly meetings with our graduation mentors, and meeting weekly with our principals, and having graduate meetings to ensure that our graduates are on track. We're about 24 days-ish, I think, away from graduation, so we're monitoring, we're going to monitor those kids right to the end, and so we're excited about that. So graduation will be here soon, and we're watching every kid, making sure that they're staying on track. We're also offering credit recovery courses and Incentivize as well, and we're also working with our Missouri options kids, for those kids who opt to take the HSET to meet graduation requirements also. So extended, extended learning opportunities will also be offered through Explore this summer for students who want to take advantage of that opportunity. And up next, we have Allison Pilly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Dr. Allison Pilly, and I'm the Director of Learning Support, which is basically a fancy name for the Curriculum Department. So I'm going to go over 1.2.7, the first half of that, which is focused on modern tools and educational resources for our students. So a few highlights that we have from this year, we have started to implement program evaluations in our adoption process, so that means that before we get to the adoption of curriculum resources, we are working with a committee of stakeholders, including staff members, different people from different departments that work with our curriculum team, and we are evaluating the current state of that program, the strengths in that program, the weaknesses in that program, based on data, and then formalizing a report focused on next steps to drive the curriculum adoption process. We've also revised our adoption process, and a few things that we've done different this year include making sure that we're including a lot more departments in our process than we had in the past, also implementing culturally responsive scorecards, so during our process, we are using that lens to look at our potential curriculum options, to make sure that we are meeting the needs of all of our students. And then also focusing on an increased level of support for our teachers as we implement new curriculum. So we are going from maybe a traditional one or two days of new teacher training, or teacher training for a new resource, to this coming year, we are already planning on six days of required training to support the implementation of that resource, as well as the shift in pedagogy. We began that training this summer, or I'm sorry, this spring, with our K-5 math teachers, and so like Dr. Anderson said, we've had really positive feedback so far. The board approved, you all approved, our new adoption in February, so that was focused on K-5 math, 612 ELA, and instrumental music. For professional learning this year, we really focused at the beginning of the year, we've trained all of our teachers in August during our event called Activate SPS, on teaching in a hybrid model, using digital resources, so a lot of that was content-based professional learning, and making sure that they were well-equipped to use those resources with their students, and then using data to drive their instruction. So we really focused on different ways to collect data from students, to make sure that we weren't allowing students to fail in this new environment that we were learning in. We also offered multiple sessions beyond the August Activate session, so that teachers could continue learning, and we could continue supporting them if they need assistance, and we had about 300 teachers that participated in those optional sessions. The last thing that I wanted to highlight was, we have been piloting this year, Mastery Connect, which is an online assessment platform. This kind of goes hand-in-hand with that data-driven instruction. Before the pilot of this, we did not have a great way for teachers to collect data around formative assessments in their classrooms, and use that information to figure out what they were going to do next, and make sure that students weren't falling through the gaps. So we started our pilot with four schools, two middle schools, two high schools, and then we expanded that this spring, so that all sixth grade ELAs, seventh grade math, Algebra I, and English II teachers were utilizing this platform. We provided training on the platform, we provided some follow-up surveys, and some provided some follow-up sessions for support as well. If the implementation this spring continues to go well, then we will look to implement that across all of the core content areas this coming school year.
Good evening, I'm Dr. Nicole Lemon, I'm the Director of Virtual Learning for Springfield Public Schools, and I oversee the Launch Program for the state of Missouri. So welcome, new board members, I'm excited to have you. I've heard Launch been referred to tonight as a crystal ball, I would like to point out, it's actually the result of strategic decisions that have been made by the Board of Education for almost 10 years. So we've been investing in a virtual program in our school district long before we knew we would need it for a pandemic. We started this, this school year with over 7,000 of our students taking part in our programming full-time. That resulted in over 37,000 course enrollments, so we were able to shift resources quickly to expand from really a choice program to pandemic education for those who chose it. We did assist in our graduation rate and persistence to graduation, by over 4,000 credits earned, and we have a full credit recovery virtual option as well. One thing that we did at the start of this year was, we did have to implement an elementary program. So prior to the school year launch was a 612 program, and so we were called upon to implement a K-5 program. Without our curriculum department and digital developers and the learning, the virtual learning department, we would have had to send those elementary learners to for-profit virtual schools, so we were able to retain them in our district. I'm really proud of the work that our teams did, we are now a national leader in K-5 virtual education, so we are now looked upon, not only in the state of Missouri, but across the country, for how did you do this, why is it going so well, how are kids performing? At the time of this board report, we are still serving about 17, almost 18% of our students in full-time virtual learning settings. As both Dr. Anderson and Dr. Woodard mentioned, we did put standards around that. So is virtual education for everyone? No, just like seated education isn't for everyone, so we believe in getting the right kids in the right seat. I strongly believe, and I think the gentlemen agree with me, that those that remain full-time virtual students are those who are performing well, and have the supports they need at home. We worked really closely with, again, attendance advisors knocking on doors, sending letters, making phone calls. We announced recently some expanded opportunities for students next school year, so we're calling it Launch Next. If you If you know me, I like to name things and brand them. So we are really looking at providing more support. So Launch Next is all about additional supports for students. So we're expanding mental health supports for students who are full-time virtual students. We know that's needed, and we are going to put resources behind it. We are also adding exceptional learner services. So services for students who are special education, students who are gifted education, who receive gifted education services, as well as ELL services. And then finally, what I love about Launch is we built it, so we can change it. And what we heard loud and clear from our secondary parents is what they loved about Launch before, which was asynchronous instruction, learn at your own time, flexible learning. We had students who need more structure there at those levels. So we are calling it Launch Live next year, and grades six through 12 will have the choice to have asynchronous or synchronous, so they can have live lessons or they can learn at their own pace. So this is all about keeping virtual ed flexible, but providing those additional supports. So thank you.
Thank you, Nicole.
Good evening, I'm Kristy Davis, and I'm the Director of Early Childhood and Parents as Teachers. Let me give you a little update on what we've been doing in early childhood. It's been a fun time in early childhood, especially trying to figure out how we navigate through these new waters. And so, things are looking a little different, and we know that different doesn't always mean perfect, but we know it means that we're being flexible and adapting to a new reality. Currently, we are offering some virtual and in-person group connections, so that would look like our K-Preps, where we're inviting kindergarten families and kindergartners for the fall into some of our buildings, and meeting with families virtually for storytime, so that we can continue to meet lots of families in where they are and where they feel comfortable. We try to maximize outdoor experiences too, to make sure that we are not contributing to any of the cases that are in the community. Also, we have been doing, oh, yeah, from there. Also, we've been doing some screenings. We did about 2,400 screenings at the time of this report, but since then, we have started our kindergarten registration. And with that comes the craziness of parents calling and getting their child screened. And so, we have some parent educators who are doing like 16 visits or 16 screenings within a week, and that we usually see about five to seven within a week. And so, we know that parent educators are really trying to make sure that we get those screenings in place, so if there are any red flags or any concerns, that we can address those now before students enter the school buildings in the fall. Also, with Wonder Years, our early childhood program, we are anticipating being at Boyd and Williams in the fall. And so, we are really excited about having a hub of classrooms at each of those sites, where our teachers can collaborate with one another and where students, if they need extra services, that they have them right there at that location. And it's also nice for families who have more centralized location where they can come and receive services in early childhood. We are trying to recruit for those spots for next year, and so trying to get the word out to families that we are ready to enroll and get their children ready to come in the fall, so that they're ready to start on day one. And also, just to enroll families and parents as teachers, because we did have a decline in our numbers, the number of families that we've served this last year, as our students went on to kindergarten and we stopped serving those students, we didn't see the same kind of numbers coming back in. And then finally, we're anticipating filling all those spots next year, that we have been holding off on filling all of them this year, just with trying to keep a safe environment for our preschoolers. And so, we will hope to have 940 preschoolers in seats next year in our great facilities. Thank you so much for the opportunity to come and share.
Thank you.
Class pieces, are you adding those to the list?
I will go over the last two slides at this time, not to belabor the night, I know it's been a lengthy evening, but we are really working hard to ensure that we keep the grad rate high. We're very proud of the work that happened the previous year, and we want to continue to build upon that. However, it has been a challenge due to the pandemic. One of the things that we do is that our graduation mentors, they meet with students one-on-one to help identify and eliminate any barriers to the academic success of students. And so, we are continuing to work with our students who pursue the Missouri Options route, and that's going real well. We're pleased about how well that's going. Studi has been instrumental in our success as well, so students who are not doing well in the regular environment, some of those kids will go over to Studi, and they're able to graduate there. And so, we're pleased about the work that is happening there as well. So each and every week, as I mentioned before, we are really working hard to identify kids who are falling through the cracks to make sure that they can pull through. So I don't have a real prediction for you this time, but I do think that we'll be north of maybe 92% this year, but we'll see how it goes. Don't want to give away much, but I do feel that we'll be doing pretty well. So just a couple of quick points, and then I will move out of the way. The four-year graduation rate, of course, for FY '20 showed a 4.9% increase over the previous year, and we're really pleased about that. The four-year graduation rate for our African-American students has increased as well tremendously, and we're pleased to see that that rate is moving in the right direction. That went from 76.3% up to about 85.64%. The rate for our Hispanic students is also significantly increased, and which moved from 77.65% to 91.74% as well. We're also seeing the grad rate move for kids in poverty, which is what we want. We want to make sure that we're providing a good, equitable, quality education, so that all kids can be successful. Whether you live on the north side or south side, you know, SPS has to provide a great education. And we can see here that our, for, the graduation rate for our high-popity students has moved from 76.9% to 89.3% and climbing, so we're really pleased about that. And we're also seeing some pretty good movement with our students with disabilities as well. Some of those students have real significant challenges with regards to beating the rigor of the graduation requirements for Missouri, but we're seeing a 5%, increase in that population as well. And we think some good work is happening, and we're staying after it. And we're not making excuses, and we're just working hard and taking it day by day. So this time, we'll open the floor for any questions that you may have. I know you've heard a lot tonight, so feel free to find a way, and any questions that you may have for my colleagues.
That's right, that's right. We've heard from a lot of speakers from Dr. Holt's team, so at this time, we'll take questions or comments from the board. Charles.
Yeah, one question, it actually, you don't need to find the slide, so. It actually relates to nine, 16, 21, and 24. But, no, no, really, please do not. My question is, at the elementary level, there are about like 13% of elementary learners are virtual, and in aggregate, 17.8% are virtual. So all of that, I don't need necessarily, you know, drill down on that. My only question is this, we talked about pass rates, failure rates, et cetera. Can we disaggregate the seated failure rates or class rates and the virtual ones? They're aggregated in what we saw here. I didn't drill down quite far enough in the white papers, which to our new colleagues, those are awesome. They really are. You can nerd out endlessly in the white paper. So it's a long-winded way of saying, can we disaggregate pass rates, failure rates, performance on iReady, et cetera, for seated students and virtual students?
I believe that we can, because we track where they were learning at that time. So it'd be easier to say that they were this student, they were a seated student taking iReady at this time, or they were a virtual student at this time. So I believe that is certainly possible.
And it's less important, really, well, not less important in a pandemic, right? Everything's weird in a pandemic, but I think going forward, I think that becomes a really important way for us to sort of get the data.
Absolutely, and I think that will help us as we go forward to support our students even more, to help, hey, we know that the iReady is an online assessment, whether you're a seated student or a virtual student. And so, we have to give them the tools to be able to do that, whatever their platform is, but then be able to track that and add to that.
Yeah, one thing I'll say is we're really proud, and I know they mentioned the iReady participation rates. So we had high 90s, and that included virtual learners. So it's really important to our team that you took it seated and you took it virtual as a learner, so we can get that data. The state is looking at when to, what to attribute that fit to, where they started or where they ended, so I think that is part of that conversation internally, but we certainly have it.
I mean, you're certainly not responsible for the state's fantasy, in terms of testing. Thank you.
To your point, when we talk to Daphne and Chris Neal, our over-assessment, they are also well-aware of the need for us to be able to disaggregate the math data and the course data as well, by those means and modes, because that will be important. So that, we've also talked about how that will happen.
Thank you.
Can I add to that, because it's on the same topic that he addressed? So when the students went back in November and the testing was done in January, the seated students took the iReady test seated? Is that correct?
They took them either seated or virtual.
No, but the ones that went back seated took it seated. They didn't take it on Wednesday, they took it seated.
They took it seated.
So I have to say that I think it's going to be really valuable to separate out the online students, virtual learners, and the seated students. And I say that because, you know, you discussed Launch Next, Launch Live. You know, I understand this for the pandemic, but going forward, it's really important to be able to isolate exactly the benefits, the values, and the failures of online platform learning. And I think that this would be really valuable. And I think going forward with the math, with everything, just like we look at socioeconomic and racial backgrounds, you know, the demographics, I think that because Launch is now a part of SPS, that going forward, we should always have it separated out for every parameter that we look at. What do you think?
I don't think we would disagree with that. I think it's certainly a next step for us to take a look at, because this was certainly the baseline year. And so, like the other information, those subgroups had baseline years from long ago, and we realized we need to take a deeper look into this. And so, now that we have a baseline year that we can look at, we can certainly look into that and see if that's the direction that the board wants to go and provide that information.
We have an obligation to get every student assessing data regardless of their mode, because that is what the driver is, removing instruction and pressure, manifesting change in their achievement. So I think regardless of what their mode may be, we have a responsibility to dive into that and make decisions on how we're going to move forward.
Great, great questions. Sharita?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, I have lots of questions, but I'll refrain from asking all of my questions right now, because we are late on time. But I was curious, this is elementary, I've seen. I was curious about the added ZERN math curriculum, what that, was that, what that looks like? What kind of, I know that we had approved some other curriculums, but I don't remember that one. And also, the Mind Play grades two, four for dyslexia.
Allison, you want to speak? Pilly, you want to speak to ZERN?
Sure. So, sorry. ZERN is just a curriculum that we implemented for this current school year, knowing that we were going into, sorry, a hybrid situation. So the current resource that is adopted for up until now is McGraw-Hill's MyMath, and that resource did not lend itself to online or hybrid learning. So we selected a resource that would allow students to continue learning, whether they were seated or at home on those days, and just provided a little bit more flexibility. So that was one year only, and then we went through the adoption process to select illustrative math moving forward.
So with ZERN, was it only used for the students who were hybrid or online, or was it also used for the students who were seated? Did those seated students do the MyMath in McGraw?
So at the beginning of the year, all students were either fully virtual or they were hybrid. So all students were using ZERN.
And the Mind Play grades, and for ZERN, sorry, what grade was that, was it used in?
K-5.
What about Mind Play?
So Mind Play is a program that we use for students who are at risk of dyslexia, and those students are identified through a series of assessments, and they use Mind Play in place of Lexia. So it's just a more intense, more focused program that those students are using to help close some of those gaps for them. Last year, we used it with students in second and third grade, just based on what legislation required us to do. This year, the students that were using it in third grade and were, you know, moved to fourth grade this year, we continue to move those licenses with them, so that they could continue to access that resource and support.
And Mind Play is an asynchronous program?
It is, it's an asynchronous program, but it has some synchronous component, it has like a coach, a virtual coach that's built into it to help those students.
I'll stop for now, let's move on to that.
So, Dr. Pilly, so in the February meeting, you discussed Learn, ZERN, how does it go?
ZERN.
ZERN, sorry.
It's okay.
So I was under the impression that it was adopted, because there was a check made out for that. That was just this year?
That was just this year.
So moving forward, students that are online, so Launch next year, who elect for that, will not be using ZERN?
On Launch students next year, that is the resource that was selected for Launch, because it is a better resource for online learning.
Okay, so ZERN will continue with the online platform, but the seated students will have illustrative math?
Yes.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Who else has questions for this team at this time?
I have questions, and it's just for clarification, just so that I'm clear about what these terms are. I think this is for you, Dr. Woodard. You mentioned targeted interventions and recovery opportunities, but you also mentioned credit recovery. Can you kind of define those different terms and tell me what they are, how they're different?
Yes, ma'am, I can. So credit recovery is, provides an opportunity for students who fail their courses, if you fail your courses at the semester mark, then you're behind on your credits, and creates a credit deficiency. And so, credit recovery provides an opportunity for students to make up the classes that they failed, while also taking the full load of courses that they are currently in. So we don't want to put kids in repeated courses and make them feel that they're behind, so we progress them on, and then we give them a chance to make up what they missed at the same time. And they can either do it during the day as one of their eight classes, or they can take it, do it after school.
And credit recovery courses, are those all virtual?
Oh, no, no, ma'am. We offer it virtually, we do offer it virtually, but we also, seated students also have the opportunity, but it is an online platform, yes. But it's offered to both seated and to students virtually. Yes, sorry.
And then the targeted interventions and recovery opportunities?
Intervention targeted just means that we identified students who were struggling the most and who needed it. And so, that's what we meant by targeted, is identifying the kids who failed to master academic content. And so, the interventions will be the things that I mentioned, such as the, right, the tutoring and all the other, right?
One last one, I think you called it incentive?
Incentive I.
Yeah, incentive I?
Yes, incentivize. So incentivize is another initiative by the district that will give a kid an incomplete on an assignment. And so, as opposed to failing and failing for the semester, incentivize gives a kid a chance to take an incomplete, and then of course, if they turn in the additional work, then we're willing to accept that work and then give them a grade, opposed to failing. So again, it's about putting every stopgap in that we can to keep kids from failing as possible.
Question? Questions, Scott?
Okay, and this is an education thing, but for the new board member, but you are preparing 21 to the past year, and at the beginning of the year, you set targets for improvement, so you can measure yourself against what you're targeting for improvement.
District or individual building?
In the district.
So the district targets are integrated within our strategic plan, what we hope to accomplish, but individual sites annually do school action plans, and that is the planning process that they use, start to define the segments within their specific data sets and the targets they will intentionally be responsible for moving related to academics and core content, as well as cultural climate, as well as attendance, and sometimes for education rates, depending on the division. So that, I mean, that's 53 different locations and sites.
Right, okay, all indeed.
All of those, but you know, that is, that's how they measure and what the data is supposed to be used to then plan specifically for their building.
Right, okay.
All right. I, hearing no more questions at this time, I will just say, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you. Gosh, still here. Thank you. Thank you for a great overview, and we appreciate hearing from you on our strategic plan update. I have received a request from a board member to have us take a five-minute break.
Yeah.
It is 9:08. It is 9:08 on the red clock. We will start in five minutes. Excellent.
Order, order.
That's right.
I'm the product and parent tonight.
That's right. We're going to move on to our next agenda item, which is Focus Area One, Goal Three, Mid-Year Update. Dr. Holt?
Ooh, hello. So again, reminder, we're here for mid-year report, still in Focus Area One, but now talking about Goal Three, so shifting gears just a little bit. You're already well aware of the five areas of the strategic plan, but here is the Goal Three language. This is specifically around how we equip our kiddos to solve problems, be critical thinkers, have creativity, communication, and collaboration. So working really around the Cs there. Two strategies involved in Focus Area One and Goal Three, both really lying around our community partnerships and how we leverage those relationships to benefit not only our community, but our students within the system. So those are the two specific strategies and their accompanying language. Reminder to you that these initiatives bulleted below here are really how we monitor this specific focus area. So you're going to hear from the leaders of each one of these, the champions, if you will, that are driving this work and supporting that moving forward. Again, it will be a little bit of a parade as each one of them comes up to share their story right now. I just want to remind you that obviously the pandemic has prevented us from, and our students, from fully taking advantage of the opportunities and the partnerships that we usually leverage each year. So just, we are looking forward to 2021, 22, and the opportunity to have some of these programmings really reach the full potential that we just simply weren't able to do during the last year. So up first, I would invite, there she is, Dr. Dana Hubbard. She is the Director of Student Learning, Summer Learning and Student Experiences, to share first. So Dana, thank you.
Thank you for the doctor, but I'm actually not the doctor, but thank you for that.
But you play one on TV. That's right.
You could save me a few thousand. Yeah, no.
Welcome.
So my name is Dana Hubbard. I'm the Director of Summer Learning and Student Experiences. And it is a real pleasure to be here this evening. Congratulations to our new board members. And I am here to speak to you tonight about Explore, our summer learning program, about Experience SPS, and also about GoCaps. So starting with Explore, I would like to let you know that after a fully virtual June and a choice of fully virtual or fully seated in July of last year, we are very much looking forward to offering both fully seated or fully virtual options for elementary and middle school students, both June and July this summer. High school will be offered fully virtual primarily, however, we will have in-person options for high school students who are qualifying for extended school year and English Language Learner Support Services. And that those courses will be in-person, held at Central High School. Registration for the Explore 2021 session, it opened March 1st, and we are in week seven of our registration at this point. We do currently have, as of this morning, had right at 6,500 students enroll. And that, that is registered to take part in some form of Explore this summer, so be it virtual or in-person. So we do have 24 sites we will be meeting at this summer and 36 instructional days. And you will see that our sessions run starting June 7th all the way through July 30th. Our next steps for Explore 2021 is that we have a task force who has been meeting to talk about what interventions for both literacy and numeracy will look like, not only in the summer, but during the school year. And so there are some work teams that are happening right now, some proposals being made to executive leadership. And so those decisions will impact what we do this summer. And then in order to carry out those interventions and the plans and the resources that we have in place for that, it will be the Explore liaisons and our Extended Learning Program liaisons at all of the sites working together to engage those most struggling learners in those intervention services for the summer. Registration is, I mentioned, it is open. It is our priority that our students reengage in a seated format when at all possible. We understand that sometimes that may not fit the family needs. And so obviously, we want them to engage in a virtual format if seated and in-person is not a possibility. So hiring, so in order to get all of these 6,500-plus kids in the classrooms and in learning situation, we're going to have to hire a lot of folks to help with that. So hiring is underway. And I will tell you, as of this afternoon, we do currently have 618 staff placements made so far this summer. And enrollment does drive our hiring, so this will continue to increase as we go through June, actually, for July. We will continue to hire until all of those positions are filled. And we do have, Dr. Holt mentioned, that our field experiences were definitely impacted last summer. We do have a few field experiences scheduled for some of our middle schoolers this summer, providing that our partners in that feel comfortable with everything going and that we do not have any additional restrictions coming our way. Okay, next, in Experience SPS. Normally, in the fall, we would have our Camp Okanda Experience for fourth graders in the Northwest Quadrant. We would have our Greener Green Spaces Experience for all of our seventh graders. And in January of each year, we would have, for the second year in a row, we would have our Springfield Little Theater Experience for third graders out of three different schools. That did not happen this year. That was completely impacted by COVID. So our next steps are to resume when that can happen and as soon as it can happen. So we're looking forward to 2021, 22, being that year that we can start to delve back into those. Our partners are ready for us, and we can't wait to reengage. And this furthers, what this does is we learn from these experiences during Explore, and then we put them into place during the regular school year with Experience SPS. And what we do is we build on those existing relationships. We expand new relationships with partners. And this really serves to expand our footprint and reach of our experiential learning that we have in place with our choice programs as well. So we're very excited about the opportunities that lie ahead with that. For GoCaps, Carol had already given you a really great breakdown of what the budget looks like for GoCaps and kind of some important information about that. So I'll just tag on to that information and let you know that we opened this school year with an enrollment of 129 students. And of those students in GoCaps, about 60% or right at 60% were SPS high school students, juniors and seniors. The application for the coming year is open right now. And to date, when this was turned in, it needed to be submitted, we had those numbers. I will tell you that as of today, I checked, we do have 159 applicants now, with 76 of those coming from SPS high schools. And then we do have these teacher externships. That is a way that we can expand the footprint. It's all about expanding the footprint of experiences. And so while a finite number of students can be enrolled in the GoCaps program, the way that we expand that footprint is by having, sharing that philosophy of GoCaps and how GoCaps operates and how those partnerships with business really enhance student learning. We work on that through the teacher externships that happen in the summer. And so those are already being planned out, and we're already starting to communicate those opportunities to area teachers. So next steps with GoCaps are the showcase, well, job shadows are continuing to open up. And so we're taking advantage of those opportunities as much as possible, getting those kids right there in the midst of the work that is being done every day by the people on the front lines. And we also have a showcase. Our students will have a culminating activity at the end of the year where they showcase some of the things that they've learned, maybe a process improvement they've developed, an idea for a business they've come up with. And we will be doing, showcasing that virtually this year. And I will be sharing those links for you to look at the website, to check out those capstones. And we will have an opportunity to provide feedback through those, to those students. That's one of the most important things through that learning, is that our students, you know, are able to receive that feedback at the end of that long haul with that project. So I will definitely share that with you as we come closer to that. So Carol has already reviewed the steps taken that were necessary to take with the right sizing of the GoCaps program in lieu of the COVID impact and in lieu of some of our consortium members withdrawing. And so what we will do, again, as a next step, is continue to, as long as there are seats, continue to fill those seats. So we did reduce from 267 seats, if you remember, down to 150 for the coming year. And I will let you know, as of this time, this afternoon, we do have 116 of the 150 seats filled at this time. And 69 students are from SPS high schools. So we will continue to fill those seats as we continue to have applications coming in. They continue to trickle in even as late as today. So recruitment will continue, and our liaisons at all of our ascending high schools are helping us with that and the referrals. And then we also have some opportunities for kids to visit the classroom if they think that they would like to try it. We are opening the classroom up to just a few students at a time to get them in there, to see that firsthand.
Thank you, Dana. Good evening, Kelsey.
Hi, everybody. I was trying to time my transition. She caught me on guard. Hi, so my name is Kelsey Bravo. I'm the coordinator of Choice Program, so always excited to be able to provide some updates in the happenings of our Choice Program world. So starting right off, just with, like Dr. Holt had mentioned, we had had to make some pretty big decisions surrounding some of our experiences this year, just in regards to COVID. And so with that, Health Sciences Academy and my last update to the board was suspended for the first semester, and we went ahead and extended that semester, or that suspension through the second semester with full hopes of getting those red scrubs back into that classroom in August. So just kind of right off the bat, one of those not fun decisions we had to make. But now we can transition into some of the really cool, fun things that are happening in our Choice Program world. And that is with the Academy of Fine and Performing Arts. So this is the implementation year, our very first year of an amazing partnership with Springfield Little Theater and the Foundation for Springfield Public Schools. So we have been able, I mean, so many highlights. I was thinking, as I was sitting there, like, how hard it is to dwindle down what these highlights look like for the board, because I feel like I could talk about the learning that's happening in all of my classrooms for a long time, but I didn't. So the first thing I want to talk about, we had a Bookmarks art exhibition, and that was through the whole month of January, where our students at the Academy of Fine and Performing Arts worked through a series of creative processing units. So our big focus there is that we are providing kids an opportunity to explore just various disciplines within fine and performing arts. And so one of our fine art exhibitions was through poems and portraits. And so that was on display at Bookmarks through the whole month of January. Additionally, we have another partnership with the Springfield Art Museum, which is completely worth mentioning. This has been really just a great collaboration and a true example of what an education and partner looks like. Great thinking partners for our teachers. They're bringing kids into the museum, making connections with those learning standards that we're working through in the classroom. So a great celebration there. And I think one of our proudest moments for the Academy of Fine and Performing Arts was our production of Full House Rock Live Junior. So I actually saw one of our kiddos on one of the earlier slides in that production. And seeing some kids that, we barely hear them talking in the classroom, they're sketching, they're journaling, and then they get up on the stage and they are putting on a solo performance, like, I know that we changed the trajectory for some kids, and that's pretty, pretty powerful. So the next piece we have is our newest partnership with the Darr Family Foundation and Missouri State University. So we broke ground on our facility at the beginning of December. Like dirt is moving, hard hats, tractors, there is a building getting built. And we have a substantial completion day at the end of December. So the Ag Academy is going to be an agricultural-themed science school, so with a focus on humankind's connection to food. So really working on what this is going to look like in the elementary setting. So really excited about this partnership. We will be welcoming 50 fifth-grade students, tentatively planned, you know, rain can push construction back as we learn with our bond projects. So in January, welcoming 50 students, and then in that '22, '23 school year, bringing in our full capacity of 150 fourth through sixth grade students. The next piece I would like to talk about is our Quality Assurance Endorsement Evaluation. So this is our accountability measure that we have in place for our Choice Programs. So we actually put all of our Choice Programs through a three-year cycle where they are being evaluated on what we have identified as specific indicators and quality programming. So Parkview Leadership School and Academy of Exploration, we're scheduled to go through their endorsement evaluation this year, but we have postponed that, and we will pick those back up next year with the rest of that three-year cycle to be moved through the coming years. And we'll outline on the, on the next slide what those specific years will look like. So all Choice Programs go through this Quality Assurance Evaluation Process. Additionally, in the written report, you will have six years' worth of application rates for our lottery. We had our lottery application window from January 18th through March 1st, and so you can see our most recent lottery application numbers down there. For reference, we have 40 seats available at the Academy of Exploration, 50 seats available at the Academy of Fine and Performing Arts, Health Sciences Academy, we have 50 seats available there, and then Wolf, we have 46 seats there. So as you can tell, we have some great demand for our seats. And so the only fair way that we have found so far to fill those seats is through a random lottery. We ran that lottery on March 12th and thrilled to be able to welcome our newest group of students to our magnet schools. Those are some next steps for our magnet schools. As I mentioned earlier, that's our kind of outlined schedule for our Quality Assurance processes. We have some new Choice Programs that we'll be adding into that cycle as well. We are finding, in the world of agriculture, we have a very established secondary agricultural education program in our area. Elementary, we have some great programs and pockets of agricultural education that we're able to glean and learn so much from. But we are really trying to build an immersive three-year experience at the Ag Academy. And so really taking our time, being able to find something and build something that is going to be a positive contribution, not only to our district, but to our community at large. So the next piece we have, as you guys know, we move really quickly in the district. And so since I have updated this slide, we actually have received approval for us to have our, really a full, whole school Choice Program with maximizing our new facility at Jared Middle School and transitioning some programming there to the STEAM Academy. So we are excited to begin some program and research and development there. And so that is very early stages, excited about that opportunity too. And then finally, I haven't been able to say thank you in person, but my goodness, we get to bus students to our magnet schools starting next year. And so the last, you know, next step that I want to build is worth mentioning, is our collaboration with the Transportation Department on being able to get some of our kiddos to us. So that's what I got.
Thank you, Kelsey.
No, I think Natalie. Natalie?
Hitting out honorary rockery. You drink one? I would love one. Only way I'm going to get one. That's right. Good evening.
Hi, thanks for having me. Welcome to our new board members. I'm looking forward to getting to work with each of you. So I'm Natalie Murdock. I'm the Director of the Foundation for Springfield Public Schools. And as always, we are so grateful for the support of you all and the support of our district. So I'm going to give you a few updates. I will say that when, when these numbers were turned in, it was January. So they've changed a little bit. Our back-to-school grants that we awarded at the beginning of the school year this year, we awarded $156,000 in grants. And we are really excited to kick off the new year. So grant applications for 2021 will actually open next week. So we're excited for that opportunity. We have added new grant categories this year, so we are giving their own space to mental health, to literacy, to STEAM, and to equity and diversity. So these are all things that we've always received applications for, things that we've always funded, but we're hoping that by having their own But we're hoping that by having their own category, it will just drive some interest in those directions and they're things that we think are really important for our students. So we're looking forward to that. We also have awarded more money and raised more money than is, than is in that, that report. So we have now raised $940,000 this school year. We have now given Springfield Public Schools over $1 million this school year. And I say that with so much admiration for our donors because it's a pandemic year. This is not me, this is our donors. This is our community. These are the people that believe in our schools and our students. And we have been so impressed by how they've stood behind us. So we're so grateful for our donors for supporting these initiatives. We are super excited to celebrate somewhat in person next week at our Celebrate SPS banquet, which is formerly our Teacher Appreciation Banquet. We are still appreciating teachers and, and all that comes with, but we're, we're kind of rebranded it a little bit to include all of the folks that make Springfield Public Schools great. And so we are super excited to recognize those folks. We have some people that will be attending in person that are going to be honored on stage and will have the joy to name the new teacher of the year. So we're really excited about that. We have about 20 or 30 schools doing watch parties at their school site and we're delivering celebration boxes to them. So we know we can't all gather in person just yet, but we're still going to celebrate together Monday night. So hopefully many of you will be able to attend that as well. And we are not, next steps are not scholarship season because scholarship season is now. So we are in scholarship season. We are set to award $114,000 in scholarships to graduating seniors. So we are meeting with those high schools all this week to select recipients and that is not an easy job, but we have a lot of great students that we're anxious to support. So I would, would end with saying that we had a great five-year strategic planning session and we have already jumped into that. One of the, one of our initiatives is around mental health. So we immediately kicked into high gear and added that grant category. So looking forward to working with Allison and her team in the new year to expand resources to support mental health, along with a lot of other things in that five-year strategic plan. So as, as always, we appreciate you guys and your support of the foundation and know that we're always here to help in any way that we can. Thank you, guys.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Brianna Kavanaugh. I'm the coordinator of Fine Arts and World Languages. And I get to talk to you about the amazing Any Given Child Program, our partnership, partnership with the Kennedy Center for the Performing Arts. And I am really excited to be able to tell you tonight that we have been able to continue almost all of our programming, just in different formats, most of that virtually this year. And that is 100% in part to our amazing arts partners. I would be remiss if I did not thank them for the amazing work they do. They were reaching out to me before school even started in August and saying, we know this needs to look different. We want to make this happen. We're thinking this, will it work for you? Finding ways to make that happen. So their dedication to the Any Given Child Program and arts education in the community are what keep this program going and this year is proof positive of that. So so far this year, we have had 7,600 plus K-8 students partake in those Any Given Child experiences virtually and some in other formats like backpack programs, that kind of thing. Those numbers will definitely increase before the year end because we have a few more things that will take place in May after MAP testing is finished. The MOXIE has expressed interest in expanding their offerings. Currently, they do a program with third graders at 10 of our elementary schools and they are interested in expanding programming to sixth grade, which is a great fit for us. We need more programming there for Any Given Child. So we're looking forward to that. They're working on grants and proposals to make that happen. And then other than that new thing at sixth grade level, we don't have anything, any new partnerships planned for next school year, but we'll just keep on keeping on with the amazing work that our partners are doing.
Good evening. My name is Martha Benig and I'm the director of learning development in Springfield Public Schools. And I'm here just briefly to give you an overview of some partnerships that we hold beyond professional learning within our system, predominantly with the Greater Ozarks Cooperative and School District, which we lovingly call Go CSD. And so as you can imagine, as, as noted at the bottom of the slide, COVID has definitely had a tremendous impact on this work in regards to bringing learners, adult learners from across multiple districts together to learn. And so Go CSD has been really instrumental on the, behind the scenes and providing and expanding some virtual learning experiences for educators in over 65 partner districts here in our local region. That has been through catalog, but then also through resources within the new Go CSD app. So check that out in the App Store. What is most exciting though, is to note that the Go CSD Innovation Summit, which typically happens at the end of each school year, is going to be really a kickoff school year event in early August. And right now the plan is to gather safely distanced as needed, but to gather with our collaborators across the region and learn together. Call per proposal to that has been out for the last month or so and the team has made some decisions about who will be presenting. And we will have quite a few SPS educators and leaders presenting at that event. Up to 200 SPS educators can participate in the learning at no further cost than our partner membership. And the great news is it's not just about the learning that we share, it's about the learning that we get to gain from our regional partners as well. And so that is coming. It continues to be a great collaboration and I think everyone's really excited and looking forward to the opportunity to grow and learn together again coming this summer. So thank you.
Thank you, Martha.
I'm going to share updates around the Strategy 1.3, which is student experiences. And so there are two student experiences that we'll give you an update on tonight. I'm going to start off with the learner portfolio and then Dr. Litter will continue with college and career academies. So these are to help our students get the most engagement and participation in their learning experience as possible. The learner portfolio specifically I'm going to discuss is around an option for our students to think about your refrigerator at home with the students that came home with their work and you proudly put that on the refrigerator that showed their learning. And so this was a digital version of that work. And when it came to learning portfolios due to the pandemic, we put that on pause because the teachers had very limited time when they had to teach students in front of them. And we just didn't feel that focusing on the learner portfolio was the best use of their time when they had that limited time with them. So we put that on pause for this school year and we will look at how we will prioritize that and continue that for future years. And so that was a very brief and brilliant, if I might say, update to the learner portfolio. And with that, I'll turn the time over to Dr. Litter around college and career readiness.
Speaking of brief, I'm going to try to follow suit. This is a quick update on the college and career academies that we have at two of our high schools, and that is Glendale and Hillcrest High School. This year, we're pleased to let you know that we have had 220 students earn industry recognized credentials. They've earned certificates that show that they're career ready. 74 of those certificates were OSHA 10 safety certifications in agriculture, environmental and/or construction trades. We had 75 students who earned industry certifications for OSHA health occupations. And then we had 71 students who earned industry certifications for CPR, pediatric CPR, first aid, or how to operate the aid, the machine process. So really pleased about that. Moving on to the next slide. Though COVID-19 was a downward year, we still had students who participated in career opportunities virtually. And so Hillcrest and Glendale both partnered with the Ozark Region Job Center to do some career fairs and things like that. And so we're very pleased about how that went. Also, both Hillcrest and Glendale will celebrate the addition of their new ambulance simulators. And we have some really cool St. Yar. classrooms that we want you to see very soon. We'll be inviting you out to see these real-world occupational things that we're doing, which are giving kids firsthand experiences in real-world industry equipment. You will not believe it. So your investment in that will be, it's amazing. Can't wait for you to see that. And next I'll go over a little bit of data. This is the number of dropouts for our Glendale and Hillcrest High Schools based upon the number of kids who are in academies. Overall, our dropouts for academy students decreased significantly. As you can tell, in comparison to the previous year, there was a significant decrease observed amongst our 11th grade academy students from FY '20 to FY '21, which resulted in nine fewer students opting to drop out overall. And our ninth grade dropout rate remains low for academy students as well. Both schools had a single year reduction of one student between FY '20 and FY '21, which is a strong indication that this model is keeping students on the path to graduation. And that's what we wanted. So we're pleased about that. The next slide is about discipline at these particular high schools due to the academy's model. Ultimately, long story short, we noticed that less than 1% of students received disciplinary referrals at Glendale and roughly 2% or less received disciplinary referrals across grades nine through 11 at Hillcrest. So we believe that more student engagement leads to kids who are actively learning and less disciplinary action in the school due to learning engagement. The next slide is about learning loss. So when kids are suspended or placed in in-school suspension, they're losing instructional time during the school day. And so these numbers give you an indication of what learning loss looks like for kids who are suspended out of school or suspended in, in-school suspension. Glendale had a slight decrease of .56 in loss of instruction rate, which reduced the overall number to four or roughly four days of instruction combined as cumulative total of all the kids who had a disciplinary infraction and how much time they will be missing overall. Hillcrest, Hillcrest saw a little bit of an increase of 6.49 with theirs. So their lost instructional rate raised to about 13 for their 10th grade academy students. Overall, pleased to announce that disciplinary numbers across the district are extremely low this year. We've had very few incidents in comparison to previous years. And so we've reduced the occurrence of long-term suspensions and time out of school. And so we know that our interventions and methods are working very effectively. The next slide shows our percent of course failures for personal students. Course failures for ninth grade students demonstrated a 13% increase for Hillcrest and a 5% increase at Glendale in comparison to the previous school year. Overall, an 8% increase in course failures were observed for sophomore students at Hillcrest and a 6% increase occurred for Glendale. So those, those are the highlights of those numbers. And then I'll move into some final slides here as we proceed to close. So one of the things that we do with the career academy models that we serve as students and parents and we want to get their input. And so something I thought you all will find very interesting is when we ask students about questions on the survey about their resilience, how are you doing? How's it going? And so 94% responded favorably to they know the importance of not giving up and sticking through difficult tasks and subjects. And it was 92% favorable at Hillcrest and 94% favorable at Glendale. And we're very pleased about that. So our kids are hanging in there. They know the importance of being resilient during this difficult time. They know the importance of sticking through the tough times and we're proud about that. Also, we're pleased that our parents responded favorably in their responses to the level of critical thinking, the level of classroom engagement as well, and the experiential learning experiences that the kids are getting through the college and career academies. So this tells us that parents like what they see happening and that their kids are happy and that they feel good about it as well. One area that we could improve through our career academies is that parents responded that they just want a little more communication about what is happening. They'd like to know more and hear more about the career academies. And so we can do a better job of marketing all the great things that are happening. And I believe that's an easy fix that we can work on with the high school leaders that are over our career academies. Next steps, and this should be my last slide here for the evening. We're planning some summer externships for our teachers. That's going to engage our teachers to work with the business community, increase that civic engagement for our teachers. In addition to that, we'll have some job shadow opportunities and summer internships. We're also planning for our NCAAC accreditation review. There is a governing body nationally that accredits all academies across the country when schools take on this model. And we will have our accreditation review visit in the year 2022, hopefully. And the goal is to get the highest honor, which is model status. And then of course, we're planning to attend the Fall National Conference in Orlando in November so that our teachers can be engaged with the model. We get to see other schools that are also implementing the model as well. Thank you.
All right. So just forecasting ahead, these are the next strategic plan updates that you'll hear. So at our next meeting, you'll have moving on to Focus Area Two, Goal One, and Focus Area Three, Goal One. So just putting that on your radar. I know you're really taking all that in right now as you heard two of these. But questions that you might have for any in the room related to Focus Area One. Camita.
I have a question. I think it's for Dana for the summer program. How, how are we measuring academic success for explorers?
I couldn't hear you.
How are we measuring academic success for explore students?
Thank you.
So what we are doing is we're taking the, the end of the year scores and then we are using that to do a handoff in the summer to those interventionists so that they know exactly where kids are, so that they can, you know, administer those interventions depending on how much time those students are engaged during the summer, whether it's one or both sessions, depends on how much room we can gain with them or possibly hold them steady during the summer. And then we'll check again the beginning of the year scores to, and do that comparison.
I know that in Explore that the students usually are able to choose a particular program that they want to participate in, not at the elementary though, at the elementary it's just overall curriculum. I mean, like it's, I, I, what I'm trying to get at is are they getting math and, and reading at the part of this curriculum in the summer? Or are they just doing kind of the other fun summer curriculum program for the children to choose?
So the, the great part about, and our curriculum writers have done a fantastic job over the summers because we can make it fun and it's really hitting all of those standards at the same time. So there is always literacy and numeracy addressed during Explore as well as some of the fun experiential learning that, that we have, have learned comes along with Explore as well. The choices this summer have been narrowed down quite a bit because of COVID, last summer and this summer because of COVID. We do look, look forward to Explore 2022 where we can build back in some of those choices that kids can get, that all of the, all of the courses, no matter what they are, are built with the standards in mind. So that, those are the framework.
Are measured at the end of the summer program?
They are measured at the beginning of the next school year. So we're looking at the end of the school year and then at the beginning of the school year and we are, are seeing how students are doing. And we do a handoff between those interventions. So end of the year handoff to those interventionists during the summer and then that interventionist in the summer do a handoff to the beginning of the school year. Teachers.
Can I piggyback onto her question? So I've seen Explore, you know, there's, you know, the fun classes. Is there like, I guess, you know, like second grade basically summer school because they need to catch up or third grade and?
It's all the same, it's all the same curriculum. What we do is we will stress, we are going, getting ready to go through that process this spring of identifying those students who, who really need to be engaged in Explore and making sure that their parents understand that this is the academic level. Your student may be two years behind, those are the, those are the students.
So there are academic levels. I mean, basically it's summer school because it's this fun Explore, you know, with like sewing and painting and pottery. And then there's summer school, core education, literacy, numeracy, all that jazz. So is that by grade level? So let's say you finish second grade, but you're not at grade level. You, I guess, in a sense, back when I was a kid, you know, it was summer school. So you did second grade again, sort of, to be caught up and ready for third grade.
It's their rising grade level. So we make sure that they go into their rising grade level. And if they're being retained, then that would be the grade level they're going into the following year. So it's always the rising grade level during the summer.
But is there a class? Like is it summer school?
Well, we have Explore courses that are the choice of the student and the parent. So you mentioned pottery and some things like that. We do have artworks and that is something that is different than some of the Explore courses that we offer. It's part of Explore, but artworks is kind of a separate thing that's been happening for 37-plus years. So Explore is in its sixth year and so we retool the curriculum every single year to make it exciting for kids and make kids want to come to summer school because our feeling is, and we embed the literacy and the numeracy, we embed that in intervention for the students who need it, but they're not singled out and they're not moved into a remedial course. We want them to be engaged in all of the experiences and all of the fun learning, but we also are wanting them to get what they need out of it. So I think that, thank you.
The answer is still have an opportunity to have intensive interventions and programming that is, is a fastest. that is a facet, just like we pull out students that are eligible during the school year for additional Title I supports. That same structure follows them into summer school. So, those intensive, more intensive interventions to get them caught up for those students that are more than several grade levels behind are available during the regular school year and during summer.
Okay, I got it. Thank you.
One question. I was really impressed with the decrease in the discipline rates at Hillcrest and Glendale. What effect do you think the fact that they were in school last year over a year had? What role did that play? So are they artificially reduced to a certain extent?
That's a fair question, Charles.
Somewhat hard to say. You know, does the mask lead to better behavior? Who knows? I don't know. That's difficult to ask.
Almost certainly not, but yeah.
I think that the time the kids were spending away from each other did contribute somewhat to less conflict among students. But we've seen that since they've been back in four days, by the way, that modality that it's just gone well, just having a better year.
That, I think, is the really compelling thing, is that now that they're back, then I think that's an accurate comparison to the previous year.
You were instance this year. So, you know, it could be that kids are happy to be back in school, get around with friends and peers, and not have the kind of conflict amongst students that we've seen in previous years. Let's knock on wood. Stay, yeah, real wood. That's real wood. Yeah, we will next year.
Why do you think the percent of course failures has increased so much, though, at Hillcrest and some at Glendale?
Well, we saw course failures increase across the district across multiple grade levels in secondary. One, we believe that many of our kids were virtual, they struggled with the regular online platform. They try to manage having seven or eight online classes and getting all those assignments done. Even for some of our CED students who were there every day, some of them had to struggle to keep up with assignments, roll grades on passing quizzes. And we believe some of that was attributed to some of that to the, and some of that was attributed to not having as much time as it previously did previous year with five days of instruction. So as we progress back to more day construction, we begin to see some decrease by the third quarter. Rates six to eight.
And at Hillcrest specifically, those impressive curfew, the other curfews on the academy side, we had larger numbers of students that opted to be full-time virtual, not that all those students ended up in the van that were failing courses, but I think when we saw students that were in that van that accessed more virtual courses, there was a higher probability that some of them ended up in a bucket of failing courses.
Ron, I have a question for you. You do not need to go back to the slide, but on Slide 16, you talked about the OSHA certifications, CPR, pediatric, blah blah. Can you remind me, is this one of the first years? I can't remember. Are we seeing this because they're now, they've progressed through the academy program for four years, so this is what we're seeing, an output of those four years?
Correct. This is year three. We're going into year four, so that means that next year we'll have kids who will be in their third year, third pathway courses. So, it's starting to see those initial certifications.
Yeah. That's really exciting because I'm just trying to remember, like, I know we've talked about it, but this is really an output of what you all have been doing with those certifications. Okay. And then also, just to clarify on Slide 18, when you talk, which is about the dropout rates, when you talk about that, are you saying of the, those that participate in academies? Because when it started, it wasn't everybody in the building. So when we look at 17, 18, it wasn't everybody. But are you saying those numbers are of the students that participate in the academy programs, these are the dropout numbers of those students?
Yes, that's what we're saying.
Okay. As opposed to all of Hillcrest or all of Glendale those years? Okay, just.
Right. So now we have three years of kids who are in academies.
Right.
So it's really interesting to look at what it looks like over four-year progression.
Yeah, right.
In that direction, and we're seeing a decrease in those dropouts.
Yeah.
Particularly in our ninth grade dropout. You know, we have to wonder why. Why do kids quit the first-year high school? You know, what is it about high school that turns them off, that we never see them again? And so, that's the reason. So having this program in school, having that active engagement, experiential learning, job shadows, physics, college tools, has been something that really is engaging, if it gets interested.
I think this is a positive trend, and so I just was making sure I agreed that correctly.
My comment was about the college and career academies also. I'm really excited about it and to hear about the certifications that students are getting. I think that's a fantastic option for a pathway outside of high school. Is there any plans for doing this at Central?
We have, I want to say, we have not expanded beyond Hillcrest and Glendale, but I'm hoping that as we begin to add other things that make this attractive, other schools will want to buy in. So, time will tell.
It's exciting.
I'm hoping that other schools will want to buy in. But if not, each school has its own individual unique kind of thing that makes it unique. Central is our flagship academic school with the IB program, and so.
The other group of kids at that school are doing as hot as the IB kids.
Right.
Thank you. Good question. Any other questions before we move forward with our agenda? God, you look like you're.
I'm good.
Nope. Okay.
Can I make a comment? I'm just so excited to learn about, like, somebody's going to have to tell me about these schools. I mean, I didn't know we had an academy of fine and performing. I mean, this is just amazing. I mean, I'm assuming they're still doing core curriculum, right?
Absolutely.
But then, wow.
Yeah, that's right. There's lots of great.
I just go to SBS.org and learn about this.
That's right. That's right. All right. Thank you, Dr. Holt and team. Thank you all. Thanks for sticking with us. Back to our board agenda here.
I don't know where to. I dread that.
Steven's coming to help. I'm going to save my board comments for the next board meeting. I'm going to save my board comments. All right. Our next agenda item is report from administration, superintendent update.
Yeah, just real brief. I thought you had a ton of content tonight.
We would like an hour.
I could go.
We know.
I'll give you a handout. I'll give you a handout. We're good. Instructional model. We're so happy to be back in five-day, full-on learning, and we've had more kids even re-enroll with us, right, in the last four weeks. So, Dr. Anderson, I know he's escaped, but we've had 100 kids. Oh, he's still there. He's one of the only people still.
He blends in with the wall. Yes.
But K5, we know that's where our biggest, worst loss of student population has been this year, right? With all of our kindergartners show up, not a lot of first graders went missing in this process or went into a different educational format. But once we got to five-day, we've seen probably the biggest increase in spike of re-enrollments. So that tells us that that's what everybody was desiring, once it was safer, right, and the data has, you know, played out that in five-day, in fourth quarter, it's the best four weeks we've had.
So this is some of the kids from that 850 that were missing, 950?
Exactly right.
That some of those kids are returning?
Some of those kids are coming back.
Excellent.
So, which, you know, we'll take fourth quarter over no quarter, right? We don't know exactly what they were doing. We're doing everything we can to get them caught up, but they are starting to get some transition back to us, which is a real positive sign and hopefully an indication of what we'll see in five-day summer learning as well as five-day deployment in the fall. So we're excited about the five-day. We're excited to see students returning to us, and we're thrilled to see that the community health data and the health data in our district continues to improve, right? Fourth quarter is the best quarter we've had, and that's with more kids in our schools than we've had since day one, or since last March, basically. So thrilled with that. A piece of that is our vaccine process. So as you know, we offered all of our staff the opportunities, and we communicated to them multiple sets of days with Jordan Valley Community Health Center as well as Springfield-Green County Health Department. We had about 2,400 say they were interested, and we don't track who actually goes, but we communicate every opportunity, and we continue to communicate to them and their families the opportunities. Vaccine is becoming abundant in our community at this point, so that's a good opportunity. We've also deployed it to student interest, right? So there is access at over 16, so we've sent that to parents to say, "Are you interested in your student getting access?" We've had 900 families express interest for student vaccination, so we'll be running a first round of clinics on those sites next week at each of our high school sites. So we're excited to offer that opportunity for some of our kids too, whose parents want to offer them that chance. So, those are good health trends. So we are going to maintain our current mitigation strategies that we have in place right now. As you know, the city is modifying their rates for occupancy. That's coming at the end of this week, but they're not changing any masking ordinance and those things. They'll have to wait through a couple cycles, I think, to see how the occupancy shifts take place. Occupancy really isn't changing much for us right now because we're pretty much fully occupied. We know we still have a lot of students in virtual, but that number's declining. But occupancy, we've managed through the occupancy issues. Our events, we still have occupancy issues, and we're going to keep the same standards. Most of our end-of-school events, you know, we run off-site, so we'll work with the state to continue to run the same kind of occupancy restrictions there. Masking requirements likely to stay in place through the end of the year until the city would make any kind of modification. Really, the discussion becomes summer at that point and what modifications would we have for summer. But you know, we're trying to get five-day, full-day learning for that opportunity, and then we will meet with Springfield-Green County Health Department in mid-May, see what the data looks like, see what the community's health looks like, see if they're going to make any recommendations to the city to move from the yellow to the green zone, and then what would be our response at that point. So, we've got a little time to wait and see kind of how this next cycle plays out. That's really the admin updates, with the exception of some communication things. Just to know, celebrations, Rose Banquet is this week. We're sorry we didn't invite board members. We have some restrictions at seating this year. I know you guys like to be a part of that, but we just are focusing on the families and the students and making that happen. SBS Teacher of the Year finalists have been announced, and the winner will be revealed next week. So I hope you can come to the event with the foundation. MAP testing and in-course exams begin next week, April 19, and they run through early May. You've probably seen some information about that, but this is the testing window. And again, Dessie's expectation, and the federal expectation is we will try to test all kids onsite. That's different than what you saw today when we did iReady because we tested them in their mode, right, wherever they were. These will all be onsite, so virtual students will need to come and work with us. So Dr. Holt and the team working around the clock to try to find ways and opportunities to get those virtual students comfortable when coming in and taking that test. And then the department will push that up to the federal level. It won't be used for accountability purposes, just like we know the reports that we showed you tonight. We gave you context of last year, but it's not a very fair comparison, right, for each individual kid or the pandemic season or even the academy stuff. We gave you context of it. Dessie's going to say the same thing. Here's the context of history. Here's the data you know today. How do you use this to grow and move forward? And I think that's what the team will be doing with both the state data and the end-of-year data, because we'll do our data and then we'll do our iReady testing also at the end of the year in the next couple of weeks. So, got lots of assessment windows coming our way as we wrap up the year. Other things, district-wide ACT testing, again, more assessment is on April 21. Hall of Fame nominations are open through April 30, so if you know anybody that you want to recommend or communicate to the community, get those in. We'd love that. And we're pushing out, you've seen the opt-in and opt-out transportation communication going out to our community. As we build those routes and those timing start times, we're trying to get a full dataset of who's opting in and who's opting out. So that communication continues from our team and being used by our transportation department to build routing for next year. That's the communication side. If you're all right, I'll shift to legislative. Nicole and I were able to spend Monday at Jeff City as part of the Missouri School Board Association Legislative Forum. Jerry was kind enough to bring you back all a document with all the updates regarding all legislation, so I'll pass those. It was a very informative meeting, to be honest. We had legislators we were able to hear from. We had Kansas City and St. Louis Public talking about the impact of charter on their systems we were able to hear from. We heard from other state leaders, Arizona and Ohio regarding ESA impact, that's the voucher bill, as well as we heard from the commissioner before we did our Capitol visit. So, very informational, or a lot of good information that you can take home. I know you get a lot of updates from MSBA, but this is pretty fresh and it's worth your time, I would tell you, because we're down to four and a half weeks, right? And this is where urgency really comes into play when it comes to bills and how they move and how they get packaged and deals that are cut in order to try to move some reform agendas or special interest agendas or just good educational bills that we support. And there's several of those also, right? But stay engaged, listen to your MSBA update. I know if you have any follow-up questions on this content, please let us know, but it's the same stuff. There's nothing new that's been introduced that you haven't been informed of over the last few weeks. The board members, this might be a place that you haven't engaged in time, but this would be great reading for you to get away in the land of what's going on legislatively right now at the Capitol. And I will continue to monitor, engage with you. Be also, and I know that's coming up, the MSBA forum, I think it's next week, regional forum. I'm sure you'll get a little legislative taste at that point if you're able to attend that. I think that's all the legislation and the admin updates. Questions? Follow-ups? Here's your board. Just take one off the top.
Okay, moving along to our agenda item. The next agenda item is board comments. Any comments from the board at this time?
I know that several of us have the opportunity to attend the NSBA conference, and I was one of the persons who attended, and I sat into several really good sessions on board, superintendent relationships, run on effective board meetings and having more effective boards. There were also opportunities, in spite of the fact that the conference was virtual, I had the opportunity to network and connect with other school board members from across the country, not just our state, and to hear from them about some of the challenges that their districts were facing and how they're approaching those different challenges. So that was really good to hear, some different approaches, things that I may not have thought about because, you know, either it's new for us or we haven't gotten there yet.
Thank you, Shreeda. And I know Denise and I were also.
Yeah. Participated in. I think we maybe got to listen to some of the same sessions, but I think there's something else that was interesting. They had some wonderful keynote speakers. And I think the recurring theme for me was just that kept hearing about what the pandemic has, some of the consequences of the pandemic that we've yet to see, maybe beginning to see and yet to see. And I think it's interesting, one of the slides presented tonight, one of the thousands worked to mitigate, reverse the impact of the pandemic on student learning, and that's what many of the districts that did presentations and needed keynote speakers' same message over and over and over, and lots of discussion on social, emotional mindfulness and how to help children and teachers with the mental aspect of getting through the pandemic. And I loved what the NSBA executive director said, that the pandemic, the coronavirus pandemic has been a tidal wave-sized challenge for the nation, and the full extended damage to the nation's children remains unknown. Then she followed up with challenging participants of the virtual gathering to reflect on everything they've had to do differently over this past year, what worked, what didn't, and what they didn't get a chance to try. And she said that reflection is necessary because to overcome the learning loss, the trauma, and other challenges our students are facing as a result of the tidal wave, it's going to take that same innovative spirit that got us through this past year. So another was like a message to us, to the board, all the innovation. We had to go that our district was in last year, just get our students through. There's more coming, and we're going to have to continue to be as innovative. This is not the time for us to slow down or stop or not continue to do what we can, but it appears that the emphasis more on mental health and positive thinking. And there was a great speaker called The Happiness Advantage. Did you guys get to hear him? And it was really amazing because at first I thought, oh, this guy's just really happy about everything. But he is a tremendous scientist, researcher, and he's done a lot of work on just that mental aspect of trying to go a positive route on how you approach things. And he has wonderful. And he has a wonderful book called The Happiness Advantage. So I ordered it, and I hope to read it and be happier for some. Well, anyway, it's, it was some amazing speakers, keynote speakers, and some great, I agree with Sharita, some great presentations, and allowed us to hear what other districts are dealing with and where we are.
Thank you, Sharita and Denise, for joining me and attending on behalf of our school district and to the National School Board, even though it was all virtual, it presented a different element, but there was a lot of good content, and those sessions were recorded. So I know there's some others that we only watch one at a time, so I want to go back and watch and-
Some that were full.
Right, right. You could only, I don't know how you can only fit somebody into a virtual room, but apparently you could.
Only 50.
That's right. A couple things during that time stood out to me and Denise, well, a lot of things, but given our time tonight. One thing that Denise shared was the word trauma and just the emotional trauma that our students have been through, our teachers have been through, and the care needed. The pandemic isn't over, and things are back to normal, and everybody's normal again. It's that, it's that being aware as board members of the trauma we've all lived personally, our students have lived in our living, our teachers and staff, and that that's gonna take some time to nurture our community back to thriving. And so that, that was one thing that stood out to me in the sessions. The other thing was the topic of board-community engagement structure. And we, as a school district and as a board, have had a board and community engagement structure in the past, and that is something that I believe we can do better on. Certainly, this past year, we had to halt many of our traditional engagement opportunities with our stakeholders, and that has been horrible, which has been horrible, because we love that engagement and that hasn't been able to happen. So I think it's time that we look forward to the new school year and we revisit that topic of board-community engagement structure. And when I say that, I mean both the internal audiences, the board engaging with our teachers and our building leaders and our associations, as well as the external audiences, our regional peers, our local businesses and our neighborhoods. And so looking at all of those different types of engagements. And I know, I know we'll be talking about some of this with the new board members who are onboarding, and we'll talk about what has been done in the past. And I know Charles, Sharita, Denise and I have had ongoing conversations about how to make our structure stronger. I think we can always do better. And I, we've had some one-on-one conversations, and I'm just curious if Charles, you and/or Sharita would be willing to help me gather some input on best practices out there, work with Dr. Lathan and learn from her about some of those best practices, so that we could come back and present some ideas to the entire board to have a discussion in the months to come.
I'm all in.
Okay.
Yep, absolutely. Count me in. And I think it's both the external as well as even sort of enhancing the engagement of the board around the table, how do we, how do we really grapple with the issues that we face as a district and how we, we sort of allow, not just allow, that's kind of condescending, that we promote the sort of free flow of information into the district and into the board.
Okay, all right.
So yes.
Okay, I've got verbal commitments. Okay, that's great, because I could use some, I could use some help. So we are just, the next agenda item for me to comment on is our new board member orientation, and those dates have been scheduled. Kathy has helped schedule those. I'm gonna pull our upcoming meetings. This coming Monday night, we, as you've already heard mention, the SPS Foundation, celebrate SPS, and please let Kathy Louken know if you are planning to join us for that. Also, next Thursday night is the MSBA Regional Spring Meeting at Logan Rogersville at 6:00. Again, let Kathy know if you can attend that. Our April 27 regular school board meeting is set, and we've already heard from Dr. Holt, some of the strategic plan updates we'll hear at that time. Thursday, May 6 at 7:00 a.m. is the Springfield Prayer Breakfast at the Ozark Empire Air Grounds Eplex. Do you have seats available or has that passed?
No. We just need a, no.
Just let, just let you know if anybody's, okay, okay. Sometimes we have seats.
Lena, what is that?
Where is it?
No, but what is it? What's a prayer breakfast?
The Springfield Prayer Breakfast? It's an annual tradition within the city, to gather a variety of community leaders, would you say? I don't know if there's a great way to-
They just send an invite to all public entities and businesses, so it's a annual event.
Yep.
It used to be, I think, around kind of like Shingu, our partnership, but now it's-
The Council of Churches have turned to partner with the university over. And they are having a last, the numbers are less this year, that's why they need nice people. And I said that we are not good.
Okay, okay. Okay, great. And then Tuesday, May 18 at 5:30 is our combined May meeting. That's a combined meeting. As you all know, we have graduations, a lot of end-of-year activities in May to attend. Okay, great. As you all, as our new board members are getting their new SPS email account, Kathy can send, Kathy, will you please send the new board members calendar invites to lock in once they are SVP, so you can get those on your calendar as well. At this time, we, it's our plus delta. Our plus delta time is if you want to comment on any pluses or any deltas, continual improvement, write it on post-it note, hand it to Kathy on your way out, and then the board officers, we always review those, and planning to make continual improvement at our board officers' meeting to plan for the next meeting. At this time, our next agenda item is that we do need to go into executive session. So the recommended action is that the board meet in executive session to discuss audit matters as provided in Section 610.021, subsection 17.
What?
Sorry.
Go ahead. So moved.
I was reading the, okay. Subsection 17 of the Revised Statute of Missouri.
So moved.
Charles would like to make the motion.
Second.
Sharita would like to second it. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'm gonna call a roll call vote. Denise?
Aye.
Maryam?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Fair vote's aye, motion passes. Thank you for those in attendance. We will now go into closed session.